My call to the board of the U.S. Department of Labor, we choose to give another 10. Uh, I'm checking for the availability this month. I understand. Again, I want you to do this, uh, in the United States of America and to your body, which stands for a nation and your body and your soul, whether it's in justice or all. And, um, and also, as I mentioned, we've got a new credit that we don't have now, we probably pass through some different life to other country, but just to teach them here. And there are influences to fairly annoying, like, uh, this will add to our, uh, in this season, it's August in Mexico. They failed his remains, uh, they should be arrested, uh, people, uh, they talk about giving them, uh, any of our cuts from, uh, and this back to work. And also, right to the end, orcas, there was an avalanche, yeah, because he's gonna go around and dust that up.
Live stream?
Yeah, turn that one down.
Okay.
How's that now? See audio better?
I think it's the phone that's picking up.
Jordan, this one is pounding.
Awesome.
Can't hear anything, Jordan.
Hello, Adeline?
She hasn't excused absence this evening.
Yes, Adeline's here.
Okay, it's a deck, I just, I just dialed in.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Here.
Councilmember Ponce?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Cassidy?
I'm not also, but it's very hard to hear.
And we also have Scott Campbell, present via phone conference.
Denise, I don't think any of our mics working.
A little noise. And if you can hear us or can't hear us, get in touch with Cindy, Michael, or Lisa.
Hello, hello, hello. I don't think mine's working either. It's loud, though.
And, uh, can you get this camera off me, too? Please? Does that always happen?
No.
Oh, I was gonna say, I remember.
I think it's because someone's calling in, there's a, there's a video.
Oh, okay.
For them as well, so.
Okay.
Okay, um, I'm trying to base time.
You think we're working?
Uh, they're working on it right now.
Oh, okay.
Are we live at all on channel three?
Yes.
Is that somebody at the door who's knocking?
No, that was me.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so, we are, we are being heard, so we should go ahead and move forward on the agenda.
It's gonna, it's still being recorded as well? I'm assuming?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to get a heads up from Matt a little bit. Oh, we're good. All righty, our, um, city manager, any announcements or written communications?
From the city clerk's side, I have a few things, I'll carry on from what, uh, Michael reported, there were 1,398 votes cast for, uh, in total for measure H, and it passed with a 91.30% and, so that was great, and then the LA County, I've been asked about the LA County, measure J, uh, that passed by 57.05%. And it's still a close race between, um, Herlinda Chico and Richard Gaylord for the Long Beach Community College District.
They just called it, she won.
Oh, they did? Okay, thank you, Michael, I got this at like quarter to five.
Fantastic.
Congratulations, Herlinda. Okay?
That's it.
Department head reports?
Good evening, Bob Greenlaw. Good evening, Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works, I guess everybody can hear me. Um, we've got one item report out, um, beginning on November 23rd, we're gonna start the work on Pebbley Beach Road, um, at the K rails, clean behind the K rails and replacing the fence panels. That'll occur over a period of two weeks, we have Thanksgiving right in the middle of that, um, that we hope to not have to close the road, but we'll see how it goes, especially in pieces of the road, like the gate by the mole there, or, um, in some of the areas where it's really constrained as far as room. Um, but otherwise we'd be under traffic control, there will be some delays for people going through there, so there is the alternative route that will be open over the top, but we didn't want to send all the commercial traffic, uh, over the top if we didn't have to, so we'll work through that and we'll update everybody as we start the work and then as we continue the work, so everybody knows what's happening. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
We don't have Dan here this evening, so.
Good evening, Captain John Hawking, there was two things I wanted to talk about, the first was, uh, Halloween parade, we had a Halloween parade in the city, and it was, uh, well attended, we kept with the social distancing, wearing masks, and it was a, a great event for the community. The second is the election, the Sheriff's Department, uh, basically did security for the election, we got all of the Avalon and Two Harbor ballots over the night of the election, and everything went very smoothly, and I think everybody enjoyed being able to, uh, vote inside the casino, there was a lot of people that liked that compared to voting other places in past elections. And that's all I have, does anybody have anything for me?
But they enjoyed going up in the golf cart, 'cause that's a rarity.
Yeah.
That's good.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of, uh, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, um, I just have a, uh, a small, um, report for you since the last time we met, last council meeting. On October 23rd, uh, 23rd, the retrofit of our patrol boat five was completed and the boat was put back in service, uh, special thanks to our crew, um, of city mechanics, Louis Centino, as well as Charlie Canby in the Avalon Boat Stand. Um, also in Oct- October, Harbor Department EMTs joined, uh, City Fire EMTs and LA County Baywatch Station for training related to maintaining their EMT certificates. Uh, special thanks to Ocean Lifeguard Specialist Jeffrey Martinez and his group of instructors. On Monday, October 26th, Avalon Harbor was hit with a moderate to strong northeast gale, uh, northeast winds 25 to 40 miles per hour with seas three to five feet were with us most of the day. This, of course, had some impact on the cross-channel carriers and their schedules, um, two unattended vessels anchored outside the city waters were driven aground, the storm was well forecasted, and the Harbor Patrol prepared to harbor ahead of the storm by pulling the docks off the pier and moving boats to the northwest side of the harbor. Vessels that were in the more exposed areas of the harbor were doubled up on moorings and patrol advised those new arriving boaters that they could seek, uh, proper safe harbor and consider returning to their home port or a port that would provide proper shelter. Uh, this last weekend, you saw, uh, cooler than normal temperatures with scattered showers and gusty, gusty westerly winds most of the weekend with the strongest winds occurring Sunday evening as the gale warning went into effect. There was no, nothing notable to report, uh, for this weekend's wind event. Does anybody have any questions?
I do have one question about that boat that's sitting at Descanso Beach.
Did, uh, the one in Descanso?
I mean, the removal of the boat, how that's going to go forward or not?
So, the, the owner did have all of the hazards materials, uh, removed from the vessel that could be, um, accessed. Um, outside of that, the, um, owner lives on the mainland, and the owner was not aboard the vessel, uh, you know, or on the island, for that matter, when it occurred, so, right now, I would say it's largely up to the owner to secure, um, to secure a contract with somebody to remove that vessel.
And then I guess this is a question for Scott Campbell, what, I mean, it could sit there and we get another, more winds and it just chop it up a little bit more and a little bit more, and I, all the debris that was with that, when it hit, was a lot of debris, so I'm wondering what, what, um, what the city can do to give him some kind of a timeline to get that removed.
Yeah, if the owner doesn't, i- i- if the owner, um, isn't willing to do it, we would, uh, we would go through the process of declaring it a nuisance and we would, uh, remove it ourselves and then bill the owner for the cost of doing that.
And, and my, um...
That's okay, I just have a little information on that, I know the Catalina Island Company Insurance Company is working with the person's insurance to get the boat removed, we've been dealing with them all day, the Sheriff's Department actually took the traffic collision report, the boat collision report, and they, uh, gave them copies of it, and they are working on getting that removed.
Okay.
I got that information today.
Okay, that's good.
That helps.
Okay. Okay. There's any other questions for Orin, or did you want to add anything, Orin?
I don't have anything to add, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And here comes our fire chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City staff, uh, I just wanted to very quickly with this, uh, first cold snap of the winter season, just quickly go over a couple carbon monoxide safety things, this is the first time a year probably a lot of people are firing up their heaters and stuff in their homes, this, uh, more than 150 people die every year in the country from carbon monoxide accidents, it's colorless, odorless, tasteless, uh, and it's very easy for it to accumulate in your home, so it's important that people install and maintain their carbon monoxide alarms, that they, uh, have, uh, any of their heaters, any appliances that are, uh, not functioning properly, have those maintained, um, and make sure all new appliances are installed to meet building codes, uh, please never use, uh, your oven to heat your residents, and, uh, it's the mild symptoms are flu-like symptoms, and if you notice that everyone in the house is almost having the same symptoms all at the same time, that's a good early indicator, uh, that there might be a carbon monoxide leak, if there ever is a suspicion, don't hesitate to call 911, and we can come out with sensors, uh, and check for that, unless you have questions for me, that's all I have.
That's good information, thank you.
Thank you.
Orin's doing the duty today, thank you.
Matt Baker, Finance Director, and apologize for the technical difficulties, no Jordan. Um, just wanted to, uh, provide a, a quick update on city visitor-driven, uh, finances for the first quarter of our fiscal year, um, while I have good news to share, I think it's important to take the news in the context of kind of where the budget is as a whole, uh, the budget we did adopt draws 4 million from reserves, with, uh, the general fund needing to loan the, the Harbor Fund money in order to, uh, because the Harbor Fund does not have, uh, the reserves available, with that said, I am happy to report that TOT for the month of September was up 15% from September 2019. Hotels were really the driving factor, uh, hotels were up 25%, while some of that is attributable to new rooms or new hotels being online in September this year that weren't last year, uh, more than half the hotels did report a better September in 2020 than 2019, and so I'm definitely happy to see those TOT numbers come in. Uh, vacation rentals were down 7% compared to September of last year, however, they were up 12% from what we had budgeted in the budget, so again, uh, that is really good news, uh, for the first quarter as a whole, our TOT revenues are outpacing our, our budget projections by about 300,000, and again, while that's great news, it's still taken in the context that we are drawing 4 million from reserves, so I just want to keep that, uh, in mind. Similarly, in the Harbor, uh, cross-channel warpage for the month of September was about 85% of the prior year's September, um, that was better than what we had in our budget estimates, um, and so hopefully we can see those trends continue into October. Uh, October, for the, the city, we did see nightly moorings up from October of last year, as well as fuel dock sales up from October of last year, so I'm hoping that trend, uh, can be applied to ad tax, TOT, and other, uh, visitor-driven revenues. Sales tax data isn't going to be available until the end of this month, so I'm gonna wait till that before I share out the kind of monthly report that I send out, um, and it's, you can't really tell based on the first two months how it'll end up. Uh, so, with that, um, in total, our revenues are up about 400,000 from what we had budgeted, but again, in the context that we are drawing 4 million from reserves. Uh, other than that, the city, uh, Finance Department's working hard on the audit, we also have business license season coming up, so look for your renewal for, uh, calendar year 2021 to go out in the mail sometime in early December.
Do we have questions of the Finance Director? No, that is good news.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mayor Marshall, I have five, um, things I'm supposed to read from Mr. Hunky, so bear with me, okay? First, we would like to extend a heartfelt thank you to our veterans throughout the country, especially those that call Avalon home on the eve of Veterans Day. This year, with COVID restrictions, the VFW have decided to just host a private ceremony in which they will post the colors at Veterans Park at 11:00 AM. We reached out to them to provide some ideas and resources in which they were grateful and will take us up on the offer next year. This Saturday, November 14th, will be the final community cleanup for the year, please come out to support the event, it will be a social-distanced event starting at 9:00 AM with small teams of two and three, families welcome, and going throughout the community picking up trash and debris. The event will take place at Kids Park, and we would love to have you out to help keep Avalon beautiful, and it is our understanding, depending on the weather, that Mr. Tony and his family will be joining us for the day to assist in the cleanup, welcome back, Mr. Tony, if you were watching. Next, speaking of Avalon Beautiful, the Avalon Beautiful Committee has approved a very generous donation of upwards to $4,000 to really light up Avalon during the holiday season. The majority of the money will be going towards new LED rope lighting to be placed throughout town for a magical Christmas transformation. Holiday decorations will start to go up next week with them all in place for our Shop at Home, our Shop Catalina event on December 5th. Shop Catalina will look a little different this year with COVID restrictions, the event will take place on Saturday, December 5th, from noon to 8:00 PM. Treasure discount cards will be available throughout the day on Wrigley Stage to shop locally for great island discounts. This year, the Rotary will be sponsoring a gingerbread house decorating contest, houses will be available to purchase starting next week and can be pre-decorated and brought to Wrigley Stage on the 5th between 1:00 PM and 2:00 PM for the judging. The Interact Club will be selling hot chocolate and popcorn throughout the event, and last but not least, Santa Claus has upgraded his sleigh to an Avalon fire truck and will be paraded throughout the streets of Avalon wishing everyone a Merry Christmas. And don't forget your letters to Santa this year, Santa once again has made it convenient to leave a letter in his mailbox in the arcade, starting November 23rd through December 17th. Lastly, we will get into the holiday spirit, our holiday food basket program starts off with Thanksgiving meals for families in our community that need it the most. We have received donations already from BB&amp;K, thank you, Scott Campbell, and the Rotary to make this happen, and just learned today, another $1,500 from the Lions Club. Approximately 60 families will be blessed with a Thanksgiving and Christmas dinner this year, and thanks to those wonderful donations.
That's fantastic.
And one thing I forgot, uh, Mayor, is the written communication, we have received eight, um, communications that I'm aware of for item number six, and those will be noted again on that item.
Okay, thank you. And, anything else to, as a city manager to report?
No, ma'am.
City Attorney, do you have anything?
Uh, the only thing is that, um, is just kind of about myself, I have been chosen as one of the top 100 Irish attorneys in the country for this year, so, um, it's a fun honor to get.
Good news.
Yeah, well, how many Irish attorneys are there?
Uh, 102, I have two other people out.
Scott, start over, 'cause Ollie made a jo- a joke. How big, how big is the field?
I've been privileged to be recognized as one of the top 100 Irish attorneys in the United States this year.
Congratulations, Scott. Congratulations, Scott. Top of the evening to you, or something like that. Okay, um, and Councilmember report? Who would like to begin?
I will, because it's short this week, I would like to thank the Avalon community for voting to pass measure H, as we replace our hospital, good job, good job, good job, thank you so much.
Very nice.
Uh, just a couple of items to report on, one, um, volunteered at the, uh, Vote Center, at the casino on Saturday and Sunday of the election, the pre-voting, and just want to thank the citizens of Avalon, have a few friends that had also volunteered around the country and had experienced, um, a very different, uh, welcome or lack of welcome than what they usually do. Normally, people are extremely kind to poll workers, and it's been a really positive thing, and I want to say thank you to the citizens of Avalon and the visitors who also voted there, um, for being exceptionally kind, uh, when we were hearing of stories, even from people visiting, of family members who were experiencing less than that when they were volunteering, um, it was a really nice couple of days, and, um, had almost split on the weekend, uh, visitors and locals who were voting there, which is kind of cool to hear, so, um, some people were super surprised to learn that they could actually vote on the island in the ballroom and wouldn't be able to see it otherwise while they were here, so, um, that was phenomenal. Congratulations to the Lakers and the Dodgers for winning their championships each since we last met. Um, I'm just saying, if we want to host a parade in 2021, I'm open. Um, if there's any way we can do that, that would be fantastic. Um, and then otherwise, um, attended, uh, just a couple of regular COVID meeting updates, and, uh, we'll have more details to share on the, uh, Island Connectivity Group later this evening as part of one of the items.
Okay, um, great fun for the Halloween parade, thank you to Dan Hunky Recreation Department and Mayor Marshall, um, that was difficult, uh, to choose, but, um, great costumes, really good fun. Uh, I did attend the Gateway Cities Council of Government meeting, um, and also very excited about measure H, um, Ollie Olson and myself have participated for a couple years in the hospital consortium, and it was, uh, a privilege to be a part of that, but great to see the end result, uh, that went in the favor of the hospital. Um, and also wanted to just do a congratulations, I'm pretty sure the results are final, for Congressman Alan Lowenthal and Assembly Member Patrick O'Donnell, who have been long representatives of Catalina Island and very much friends of Avalon, um, always looking out for Avalon's best interests, so I want to say thank you to everybody who, who kept them in office for us, because they've done a wonderful job, and also to our dear friend, Herlinda Chico, um, I was happy to hear that that was called today. Um, and then this, uh, may not be the right time, but I wanted to do this earlier in the meeting, um, and if we need to push it, I understand, but I would respectfully like to request that we hold over item number six on the agenda. Um, I feel as important as this topic is and is high-profile and as controversial as this topic is, that we need to have all five council members here to represent the community, so, um, I didn't realize that until we, we got here tonight, but I would respectfully like to wait till Councilmember De La Rosa is participative in the conversation.
Which could be January or February. I don't want you to think that she was gonna be here for the next meeting, because she wanted to be.
I, it's, it's a request, it certainly is up to the council as a whole, um, but I, I feel that this is a pretty, um, a, a pretty substantial topic, and I think it, it really requires all numbers, but that is just one opinion and should be... But that is just one opinion and should be discussed amongst council.
Okay, perfect. We'll do that. That's it?
That's it for me.
Okay. The Catalina Islander, for those of you who don't know, has moved their location to Metropole, and they're going to be having an open house on November nineteenth from one to three. It's two-ten A, Metropole. Is that where you used to do your spin class?
That's where I used to do my spin class.
Yeah, and where the library went. Anyway, if you would like to attend, you need to RSVP to five-six-two-four-three-zero-seven-five-five-five, or email them at admin, A-D-M-I-N, at localnewspapers.org. So five-six-two-four-three-zero-seven-five-five-five, or email at admin@localnewspapers.org.
And when is this?
November nineteenth, from one to three. And it's going to be kind of out, they're blockading so you can just kind of see in, not really, you know, look through the files or anything like that. And there will be sadly no minutes with the mayor tomorrow, so you'll have to catch us next week and hope to have a surprise visitor. And so with that, I'm also going to take the time, I have two other things that typically would be on Minutes with the Mayor, but a little bit of history on Veterans Day for those of you who may remember or may not. Veterans Day was originally known as Armistice Day. It's a federal holiday in the United States, observed annually on November eleventh for honoring military veterans, that is persons who have served in the United States Armed Forces and were discharged under conditions other than dishonorable. It coincides with other holidays, coincides with other holidays, including Armistice Day and Remembrance Day, which are celebrated in other countries that mark the anniversary of the end of World War I. Major hostilities of World War I were formally ended at the eleventh hour of the eleventh day of the eleventh month of nineteen eighteen, when the Armistice with Germany went into effect. At the urging of major US veterans organizations, Armistice Day was renamed Veterans Day in nineteen fifty-four. And Ole would know this, but on November eleventh, nineteen nineteen, President Woodrow Wilson issued a message to his countrymen on the first Armistice Day in which he expressed that he felt what the day meant to Americans. So it was Woodrow Wilson who did that. Then I would also like to make another announcement. As many in our community know, the city is developing a long-range plan for how sea level rise and climate change will affect the city's coastal resources and infrastructure. To develop the plan, we need our community's help in identifying sustainable and resilient adaptation strategies to mitigate impacts to the city's critical resources, and that is a mouthful. There is a website our community can go to to get more information, www.AvalonSLR-for-seallevelrise.com. When you log onto the website, there is information to learn more about the project and the city's efforts, as well as a survey. The survey is about Avalon's infrastructure and what the community's priorities are, given the different mitigation strategies available. The survey is open on the website until November thirtieth. If you want specific information or to request a separate presentation for a specific group, please contact our Assistant City Manager, Michael Palmer. The engineering consulting team of Moth and Nichols will be coming back to the community in the spring to report out on the survey and present recommendations and priorities to address sea level rise and climate change. The community will have another opportunity in the spring to provide feedback and comments. Once again, the project website and survey is at www.AvalonSLR.com. And we have presentations?
Yes, we have Southern California Edison will present a state-mandated annual propane gas safety public awareness presentation, and they are via a conference.
Hi, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is Adeline Young with Southern California Edison. Just want to make sure you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I have with me Tracy Denon, who is the project manager for our water/gas compliance, and Tracy will provide the annual gas safety presentation. Thank you. Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
And I have shared my desktop. Can you see the presentation?
Yes.
Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and get started. Good evening, council members and mayor. My name's Tracy Denon, and I'm with Southern California Edison, and I'm here tonight to present our annual gas safety presentation. Oh, is it not going to move? Of course it's not changing. Is it not changing? Oh, there we go. So as most of you, did it change to the next slide? Just so I'm not going ahead, because I can't see it. Can you guys still hear me? I think I'm frozen.
We can hear you, but nothing's changed.
No, it did not change to the next slide. Okay, hold on, let me. Okay, there we go. Now it's changed. It did? Okay.
Yes.
So I think there might just be a little lag, so if I start talking on the next slide and it's not there yet, just stop me and so I know to pause and wait a minute.
Okay.
So as most of you know, here on Catalina, Edison not only delivers electricity, but we also provide the water and the gas utilities as well. And so tonight, I wanted to go ahead and talk about a few gas safety tips and just reminders, as like our fire captain mentioned, you know, going into winter, there's some good tips that we could give you for lighting furnaces and that kind of thing. So, let's see here. Oh, this is going to be painful, I'm sorry. So the Catalina system runs with underground propane gas lines. We have two different types of lines. We have mains and we have service lines. Our mains are the pipelines that usually run down the center of your street. They run from the plant and provide gas to the service areas. Most of these, well, not most, the main pipelines are sometimes marked with above-ground signs, kind of of what you see in the picture there, and that information will generally be like the general location and contact information for Edison. Service pipelines run from the mains to your meter and to your homes and your businesses. Let's see, is it going to switch? I'm sorry. So because our lines are underground, it's very important that you call Dig Alert before you start doing any digging activities. If you're planning a project, even in your own property, like, you know, if you're going to dig, if you're planting a tree, or you're building a fence, or something, or a structure, it's always a good idea to call Dig Alert ahead of time. You're going to need to give two full working days before you could start your digging or excavating to allow SCE time to come out and mark the pipeline route for you. We don't want any plants, or trees, or fences put up on top of a pipeline route, because that could be dangerous if there's an emergency and we need to get to the pipeline. Also, when you're doing your excavation, you must do it all with hand tools until the gas line is found. If you do hit a pipeline, please call Edison immediately. Can you, is there something wrong? Did someone say something? So if you could, please call Edison immediately to report that you've exposed the gas line, and that way we could come out and examine it to make sure there's no damage before we cover it back up. This next slide shows customer responsibilities. All piping and components that come from the gas meter to your residence or business is considered the customer's responsibility. What that means is you're responsible for inspecting it periodically to look for corrosion or leaks, or any other things that may, you know, pose a problem down the road. There are plumbers in town who can come out and assist you in locating and inspecting and repairing your piping. It's also a good idea to test appliances regularly, and as the captain mentioned earlier, with the cooler temperatures, we're starting to put our furnaces back on, and so it's a good time to get them out there to have them checked before you start turning everything back on. Again, another note to just make sure you're not putting anything over your pipeline route, also on your meters, keep that area clear so that our meter readers could access the equipment when they need to, or our mechanics could get in there and make repairs when needed on our stuff as well. If you have any other questions regarding your gas system, the location, installation, your service turns on or turn off, you could call the customer service number, which is Let's see. So now, how to recognize a propane gas leak. Propane is colorless and odorless, so we add an odorant that helps you identify the smell. It smells like rotten eggs or cabbage. Another way to identify leaks is maybe you'll see a white cloud, or you'll hear some hissing. There may be a frozen part on a pipe that could indicate that there's a leak there, or bubbling coming up from the ground if it's underground or underwater. Flames are a good indicator that you may have a problem coming out of the ground or exposed piping. So something to remember with propane gas is that it settles in lower areas of the building, so you're going to probably experience the smell closer to the ground level. That doesn't mean that's the only place you'll smell it, but, you know, it does tend to settle. So if you do suspect a leak, the best thing to do is just get out of the area and warn others to stay away. Don't try to open your windows or doors or ventilate, just get out of the building. Once you're outside, or if you're already outside, you want to walk into the wind and away from the gas. Don't use any sources of ignition, which can be your cell phone, a lighter, vehicles, motors, equipment, turning on a light, which can actually be an ignition source. So just avoid touching anything, just get out of the area. If there's a gas cloud surrounding a piece of equipment, don't go into the cloud. Don't try to turn off the leak, just get out of the building. Once you are out of the building and in a safe place, you're going to want to call nine-one-one, and if you can, call Edison at the eight-hundred number listed. Provide a description of the leak and its location. So safety is our priority. If you guys have any questions regarding your gas service, or gas lines, or Dig Alert, or water, or anything else related to the island and Edison, you could call the customer service number at eight-hundred-three-six-seven-eight-eight-five-one. You could also look up on the website for Catalina-specific, it's www.SCE.com/catalina. And that's all I have.
Great. Does anybody have any questions? No. Well, thank you, Tracy. If there's nothing else, that was very thorough. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Adeline.
I can't find my phone.
We can see you, Adeline.
Okay, well, sorry. Thank you again for the opportunity to allow us to present this annual safety presentation. And with that, are there any other questions? And if not, then that concludes our presentation.
Adeline, this is your last day, correct?
Oh, are we on to the next item?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, yes. So, yeah, sorry about that. So I am also here to let the council know that today is my last day with Southern California Edison, and it's been a real pleasure and privilege to work on behalf of Southern California Edison. I want to thank, you know, the city staff, members of the council, everyone who I've worked with, you know, while I represented Southern California Edison. It's just been a real, it's just been a real pleasure. And Avalon and Catalina has a special place in my heart, and I hope one day to return as a resident, and in the meantime, I do plan to visit regularly. I do also want to introduce Vic Noel, who will be my replacement upon my retirement, which is tomorrow. And so I know that I'd be leaving you in good hands. Vic is a seasoned government relations professional with Southern California Edison, and is very knowledgeable, and so I know that he will only build upon the relationship that we have, and improve upon the partnership that Southern California has with the city of Avalon. And with that, I'd like to pass it over to Vic.
Thank you, Adeline. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we got you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Marshall and City Council members.
Thank you for having us join you this evening. As Adeline indicated, I'll be replacing her as SCE's interim government relations manager for the city of Avalon. I previously served as Adeline's counterpart in the South Bay, serving as Edison's government relations manager for some of the cities in that area. I'm absolutely thrilled for the opportunity to join the SCE team that serves the Avalon Island community. I certainly know I have big shoes to fill with Adeline's retirement, but as Adeline indicated, I'm committed to continuing to strengthen the partnership between Edison and the city, and I'm really looking forward to one day meeting you all in person after all of this is over. Please do not hesitate to contact me if I can help you with anything.
What is your phone number?
Oh, I will send an email to all of the council members, and that'll have my mobile number, which is the only number I use, my work mobile.
Okay, thank you. Well, welcome aboard. We look forward to meeting you in person as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And Adeline, we wish you all the best, and give my love to Joe. I know he's going to enjoy having you home a little more, too.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you again, everyone. Bye.
Bye-bye.
Bye, Vic.
Bye-bye.
Okay. I can't lick a finger with a mask on my face. All righty, we're into oral communications. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes, and no action will be taken. Captain Hawking, thank you for looking, and do you have anything on your screen?
I have one comment, but it pertains to item number six, so I'll save that.
Okay, thank you, Captain.
Yeah, has item six been held over?
We're going to discuss that in a minute when we get to it. We haven't decided.
Well, then, how can I comment?
Well, this is on the, this is oral communication. This is on items that are not on the agenda.
Okay, I think you can hear me just fine.
No, I, no, you're not hearing me. The oral communication is when people speak on items that are not on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, so, okay.
So, first of all, I went on the website, and every item on the agenda has a checkbox that says "Speak on it." So I requested to speak on the first item, which was announcements of written communication, which you don't accept. So you might want to check the website out because it's a little misinformant.
Okay, appreciate that.
So did you see my comments under that? Does that stuff make it to you, or does it just go into Ethan that hell?
I don't know what you sent, and I don't even know who you are, so...
I have your comment up here. If you'd like me to read the first part of it, the second part of it was on the item number six, and that's why I was waiting for the comment to be addressed at that time.
Okay, well, we'll do that in a second then. So the website is, for the people, the transient rental people, and a lot of people that are associated remotely with Avalon, the internet is about the only way we have of finding anything out and communicating with you. To drive over here, fly over here, boat over here is a big burden for any of them, and the vast majority of the people that own property don't live on the island that are in the rental program. And I'd like to also mention, I'm cert-trained, I was cert-trained by LAFD Fire Department, and there's a thing called the Rule of Thumb, and if you put your thumb up and it doesn't obscure the problem, you're too close. And if you put your thumb up and it doesn't obscure the problem, you're too close. Thank you.
I'm going to have to think about that one.
It's in relationship to Southern California Edison.
Oh.
It's not new, it's a problem, like it was a fire or a bomb or something.
I see. Okay, there's no other oral communication? We'll go to the consent calendar.
Click this.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Good evening.
You're going to have to put that mic down a little bit. You're kind of...
That's because I'm a shrimp.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, if you didn't understand that, don't feel bad. I've been married to him for 54 years, and I don't understand half of what he tells. Okay. So I did submit a letter, an email for, before coming tonight. I want to just verify that you all got it. I did hear from Annie and Cindy. Lisa and Michael, did you get that? But what is your name?
Oh, I'm very sorry. Susan Shedding.
Oh, yeah. I'm sure you got it, too. And plus, we have them all here, too.
That was the e-comment one.
Yes. We've got it, yes.
You did?
Yes.
Because I wanted to talk about two problems in Avalon that concern us all, and I didn't want to just repeat what I'd already been, what I'd already submitted.
Is this about CUPs?
Yes.
Then this is not, this is oral communications on agenda items not...
I'm sorry. I'm having a hard time hearing you guys.
This is on items not on the agenda.
Got it.
This oral communication.
Okay. I'm sorry.
So that's okay. Thank you.
And how long have you guys been married?
Wow, that's good grass. Okay, consent calendar.
We have four items this evening on the consent calendar. The first one is minutes from the October 20th, regular city council meeting. We have warrants for a total expenditure of $1,783,761.85 from the time period of October 10th through October 30th. And as you saw, there are a lot of large contracts on that warrant cycle. The third one is to adopt the resolution accepting the fiscal year 2021 first quarter treasuries report. The fourth one is to authorize the solicitation of a request for bids for the construction of the waste tank pumpout and fresh fill-up dock, and to approve the construction plans for the project.
Okay, council?
I'll make a motion to approve items 1 through 4.
I'll second.
Any comments, or any comments on your screen there, Michael Palmer?
I have no comments.
Okay. Thank you. There's no comments, let's call for the vote. Oops. Did I do something wrong?
No, I don't have a push, a button pusher. We'll have to ring that up, so I'm just going to go out loud.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Cassidy?
Yes.
Mayor Marshall?
Here.
Yes. Councilmember Ponse?
Yes.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. All right, now we're to general business, item number five.
Okay, we have the President and CEO Jim Liu-Yohann here to provide a report on the findings of the Catalina Island Chamber of Commerce Visitor Bureaus in 2019 independent audit. And you were all provided a copy of it.
Yes.
Sorry, Matt, I was laughing at you earlier.
Because watching the screen would make terms...
How much time did you give Jim this year?
He was a lot shorter last year, Susan.
I know he was.
He's going to do a great job.
And relative to my weight since last year, I've gotten even shorter. All right. I will do my best to be expedient and move things right along. And I don't know if, is Matt controlling the clicker, or am I?
You act.
Just arrow right and left? Okay. Oh. I'll do arrows. Okay. All right. Good evening, Mayor and council members. As has been my practice, I am here once again to report on the results of our annual audit, and also our fiscal year closed June 30, 2020. And here's a quick outline of what I'll be talking about this evening, and I'll draw the audience's attention, you've seen this every year in my presentations, to the illustration on the lower right, which illustrates the virtuous cycle of tourism promotion dollars. Visitors come here, spend money, that money in turn goes to the city's general fund, which allows for you to give us money for further tourism promotion, and draws more people here, supports jobs, and so on. And, let me see. Yes. So here on the left, you'll see a roster of our current board makeup, and on the right, our mission, vision, and purpose statements. I would like to publicly acknowledge Councilmember Michael Ponse's departure from our position as board chair at the end of the fiscal year, and also thank Councilmember Lavelle for her former participation as a board member at large. And our board is made up of representatives of tourism, hospitality, medical, and the like. So it's a pretty good representation of community leaders, and I'm sure they're all people you know well and have had experience working with here. And I would actually also like to acknowledge that under the vision and goals, this happens to have been a particular year where encouraging conservation of precious resources became very important, preparing for crisis and change became imminently important, and being flexible and adaptive were probably some of the skills that my staff and I were most called upon here. So it was not the least a bit ironic that a couple years ago, we set those goals.
Just back up.
Sure.
I'm just curious, encourage conservation of precious resources. Give me an example of that.
When we launched the Care for Catalina program.
Okay, good.
And the content on our website about how to come here with a light footprint, and to leave the place may be better than you found it.
Excellent.
Voluntourism, things like that.
Great. Thank you.
So between sections of my report tonight, I'll share visuals that are some of the examples of some of our recent digital campaign. I won't have nearly all of them, but I thought it would be informative for you to see, because you are not in our target audience. When we're launching these, we're targeting people over town, so I just threw a few in here for you to see as I go between sections. So sort of a quick down and dirty slide here on some of the results of the year. Visitor counts, as you've seen from our monthly reports and Matthew's reporting, were down significantly, nearly 26%. That resulted in a decline for the fiscal year of about 17% or 200... Could you go up a page because I lost you on that? Oh, I, my finger got heavy on the...
Yeah, that's the good one.
Here. I think it's the pen that did it. So that resulted in a decline to our budget beginning in March that resulted in $221,443, and excuse me, correct myself, April. That was when the city made the adjustment, not March. The fiscal year tourism-driven revenues were down about 17.4% as well. The ROI, that's how we, one of our effectiveness measures for the dollars you give us on what comes back in the form of tourism-driven revenues, was $9.77. Occupancy was down cumulatively for the fiscal year at 14.3%, and you'll see in a moment where I track the actual deep dives that took place. And the cost of acquiring a visitor, if you take into consideration the downturn in the number of visitors, actually went up a little bit. It was a dollar 16 last year for us to acquire a visitor, and this year it's a dollar 30. And overall, that's really not bad, given the decline we saw in April. So this is the first of two slides that sort of compare our visitor counts to some of the key measures that Matt shares with you. He was just talking about them, so I won't go in great detail, but I think it's important for the members of the community to see just how bad April got. So visitor counts were all the way down to 2,024 people. Of course, that's when the city very wisely made the decision to limit to essential travel only. That, of course, impacted TOT, taking it down to what I hope is a record-breaking low number ever in history, 4,513. And then occupancy was all the way down to 9.4%. For that same time period, here you'll see that admissions tax went, I don't believe this was a typo, I took this off of Matt's report, all the way down to $41. And the cross-channel warfage went down to 11,148, and cruise ship warfage was zero because our last cruise ship call was the middle of March. So like last year, I've paired the city ordinance with, that funds us on the left, with the activities we do that most closely relate to that part of the ordinance. And while we budgeted for and anticipated receiving about $1.2 million in TOT, reality, thanks to COVID-19, was a reduction to 985,100. Our total budget for the fiscal year was $1.89 million, and of that, we spent $1.354 million. So you see, we did find quite a bit of savings despite the overall negative number. I'll show you at the end here. Of that, $11,000 was allocated toward the concert series, down from $50,000, is what we have normally put toward that. And it's kind of hard to remember and get our brains wrapped around the fact that for our fiscal year, we actually did have a concert series still, because that was in July, August, September. So we had a portion of the series fall in this fiscal year. Let's see if I, yes, okay. So some of the information services, sporting events, and other attractions promotion efforts that are called out here with key measurements, including the nearly 10,000 phone calls answered at the visitor center, over 5,000 travel inquiry emails were answered, personal assists of over 19,000 guests in the visitor center took place, and many hundreds of other responses were given on social media channels. Of those measures, the one that is down the most is the visitor center. And you have to recall that we were in the retail sector that was non-essential. So we literally had to close it for a time period at the beginning. Otillo, which we co-sponsored with the city of Avalon, was the last sporting event to be held on the island on February 29th and March 1st, and while it brought several hundred patrons to the island, it certainly didn't make up for what we would have had had we been able to stage the other sporting events that normally come later in the year. We did get all of those hotel nights, though. That was great that we got that business in Deadwood. And so on the, on the next item, we created 75,000 copies of the Catalina Island Visitor Guide again this year, 175,000 copies of the visitor map. Distribution of those guides and maps has been significantly impacted by COVID-19, so ongoing, even now, demand is down, although it has picked up significantly in the last couple months. We conducted media relations, including over 100 pitches, which is up from 60 last year, 12 releases, which is down from 22 last year, and some of that was fairly intentional of sort of changing our logic, rather than doing general release, media releases, we went very targeted and talked to certain media. So that's literally that equation playing out there. We hosted four travel writers or influencers, down from 39 last year. That's a direct consequence of COVID and not being able to host as many and bring as many people here. 23 media leads were processed, and 18 consumer e-blasts were sent out to about 140,000 subscribers. We also worked closely throughout the year with Visit California, providing photos, blog content, hosting VIPs, and more. And that's one of the travel influencers that we did still get to host, were some Visit California reps. We attracted 1,921 new subscribers to our e-newsletters, received 10,303 online requests for visitor guides, plus 2,673 digital visitor guide downloads. Guides are also distributed on racks at California Welcome Centers, once they reopened, in addition to our own center and travel trade shows pre-COVID-19 shutdown of trade shows. Our website enjoyed 1,373,452 visits, down from 1.5 million last year, with 1,59,263 users, seeing 3,116,234 page views. And combined, our Facebook followers has now hit 108,000 people. Year-over-year growth for Facebook was up 8%. Instagram followers grew by 37%. Twitter grew by 7%, and LinkedIn was up by 66%. We posted 27 blogs, which resulted in a phenomenal 73,827 page views this year. That's our highest number so far on blog content. And section 3.2 is a long one, so I'm... Yes, I'm on the right page. So we delivered 200 wedding RFPs and another 34 groups of 10 or more, considering Catalina Island as a venue for their event or meeting. That's up from 191 combined RFPs last year. However, a group sales and marketing co-op was suspended after the pandemic eliminated such gatherings.
And what does that mean when you receive 200, or you did 200 wedding RFPs? What does that mean?
So there's a form on our website that someone who's considering holding a wedding on Catalina Island fills out, and it's called an RFP, or Request for Proposal. They fill it out, and anyone like you who is in the weddings business and has been tagged in our CRM will then receive a copy of that.
That's what comes from Kathy Miller?
That's what comes from Kathy that says, here's a wedding, and they want a DJ and flowers and...
Yeah.
On the beach.
Yeah.
That's what you're, that's when it goes from RFP to lead.
Oh, okay. I see.
When it goes out to you, it's a lead. Under the Film Liaison Services, we processed 13 permits, and, sorry, I lost my spot. 13 permits were processed along with four hosted scouts, down from 27 and 10 respectively, again, a direct consequence of COVID. Bird abatement funding was $36,777 that we contributed along with the city, down from a little over $50,000 due to the joint cessation of the contract when COVID struck. I held a seat along with several of you in the hospital consortium, the water consortium, and a community structured events committee, all of which still linger, however, they haven't been gathering quite as frequently because of COVID as well. I'm very proud of the fact that our COVID-19 microsite that we built in response to the pandemic generated so far, or generated by the end of the fiscal year, 116,000 visits. And that's visitors that are both members and travelers, seeking information about what was open, what was closed, what were the requirements when they got here. Related to that, you may recall that our agency made a gift to us early in the pandemic of the video, No Man is an Island, which was distributed and is still getting viewed on YouTube, and that was a wonderful way of delivering some, some bad news. So we are in compliance with the audit submission deadline. However, there are two footnotes on the audit related to COVID-19 that I would be remiss if I didn't fully acknowledge and talk to you about. One is related to COVID-19 response, including our staffing reductions, safety protocols that we put into place, funding applications, including a successful bid for an EIDL SBA funding that provided a loan in the amount of $150,000. We were eligible theoretically for up to $2.1 million. That's what we requested. However, they capped the awards midway through at $150,000 per applicant. We have filed an appeal and are still hopeful of getting the balance of that funding to make us more whole. And we were deemed ineligible for the PPP funds, as Congress has never approved any of the modifications that have been brought forth that would have included our particular segment of nonprofits. We're in a 501(c)(6) category, and that was never one of the categories checked on the PPP program. So we remain hopeful for that opportunity. On the second audit footnote is what's called a going concern, and I've spoken with our auditors in addition to the language that's called out on the audit regarding that, and they assured me that they made this out of an extreme abundance of caution. they assured me that they made this out of an extreme abundance of caution, and that most organizations are finding this to be a necessary note on their audits this year. They made it based on our financial forecast. The auditors were here in September and attended our September board meeting, and at that time, we had a financial forecast which predicted that we would become short of funds as early as the end of December. However, since then, you, the city, has adopted your budget, which actually allocated more money than we were currently forecasting at that time. And so it is no longer a concern that we would be impacted that imminently, but it is still a concern where we will rest financially as the year goes on. Let me see. I also checked in with Matt Baker to see if that caused him any great concern, and he's here, can certainly speak on his own, but he reminded me, which I had forgotten, that the city too has had a similar notation on your audit as of last year. So it's a party we didn't want to join, but here we are. I would also like to point out, because they give a year-over-year comparison in the audit, that two full years ago, so three years back, we ended the fiscal year with an adjusted positive cash position of $120,000 that nearly obliterated the previous year in this comparison's debt. So while it does show a two-year running debt, it's really this year's debt that is the one that is of concern to the auditors and to our board. Pages are stuck here. Let's see, did I go? I think I skipped a page, there it is, sorry. So we have refrained from any political action this year and have happily achieved gold seal status for our transparency with Guide Star, and we will not rest until we achieve platinum status. It's a lot more hoops to jump through to do that, but that's pretty significant. So again, another sample ad. This one promoted the Third Night Free program, which has been very successful in recent months, and I thank you, Mary, for acknowledging that in one of your recent updates. So some of the important things we do, we, I won't read the whole list, but you can see there are some of the things we do. We obviously, this year, the calendar of events and the cruise ship schedule, which we normally devote a lot of time to and a lot of man-hours to keeping up to date, ended up just being a lot of strikeouts. And it's still a valuable tool when we're looking back and figuring out where things were struck out, so we're not deleting the content, we're leaving it up there and managing against future change. Some more of the things that we do that we feel are very important, we maintain a free online accommodations booking engine on our website via a company called Book Direct. This year, 195,763 searches took place on that site, on that widget on our site, and resulted in 143,962 referrals to lodging properties. I already mentioned the blogs and social media. We maintain multiple microsites, Care for Catalina, Cruise to Catalina, Film Catalina, the COVID-19 microsite that I mentioned, and the GoToCatalina Partner Site, which is a tool that has been in existence for over 15 years, where the Catalina Island Company, the Catalina Express, and our organization each contribute funds to maintaining search terms, paid search terms, in order to not compete. Since we're the three largest marketing agencies, we agreed that we will together fund the purchase of those search terms and drive everybody to that one site versus competing for it. So it's a very effective means of reining that in. On the events side, just made a few notes here, we did participate in several of the community cleanup days, had more than 40 participants. We did the portion of the Catalina Island Concert Series, and then, of course, it was paused, the Catalina Island Triathlon was postponed, Taste Around Restaurant Week was outright canceled. Shop Catalina last year, we're almost to it again, but last year had 41 merchants, which was a record participation. And unfortunately, we probably won't have quite that many this year, but we're going to still work hard on it. The New Year's Eve Gala last year had 625 guests, but it is, of course, canceled for this coming New Year's Eve. And then I already referenced Otillo, and there's normally things like the Rugby Festival and so on, where we provide support, which were fewer and further between this year, but always something we're happy to be...
A question on the New Year's Eve Gala, how much do you net on that event?
You know, it varies every year. We run a P&amp;L at the end of the game. We've made as much as several thousand dollars, we've made as little as a thousand dollars.
Never 20, 30, 40,000 dollars, anything like that?
No, the ticket price, we have weighed and raised incrementally the ticket price here and there, but it's our analysis, when we look at competing New Year's Eve events that are on a much higher price point, that it would cost us as much, if not more, in services to meet the expectations at a much higher price. Carving stations and ice sculptures and things that just...
No, but just the cost of doing that event is huge, and where the hospital did their Catalina, what do they call it, that?
Catalina Ville.
Right.
Yeah, Catalina Ville, online and made more money than they ever made before.
And this is, hopefully, a fundraiser for us. We never want to do an event that costs us money, but remember that a big part of the motive for putting this on each year is to drive winter business at a time when we are in an extreme need.
Oh, you get hotel rooms and everything.
So it's hotel rooms, it's vacation rentals, it's transportation, it's all of that.
It was already in its planning stage for the music part of it and all that, so they were able to take out the actual location part and continue on. So they were already in that process.
Right, that mode, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and it's also, I mean, auctions and things like that are not part of what we're doing on New Year's Eve, you know. So last year, I included a slide that had our competitive set on it along with their budgets, so I've updated that, and it's here in front of you. This year, I've also added a column for those that have a tourism business improvement district. So I called out the funds that are currently being charged or have been charged during the competitive year, the fiscal year. I think it's important to note that the combined TOT rate and T-Bid fee structure among our competitive set is greater than our current rate of 12%. So if you look up and down that list, everybody is currently managing to charge a combined fee that's greater. Many of these destinations are actually looking at increasing fees, especially those renewing their T-Bids this year. Just a side note, and I don't expect this at all from you, but San Diego's funds of over 41 million nicely got a little cherry on top. Their city council just approved another $5.4 million for them as one-time COVID-19 relief, so. I said I don't expect that from you. So here's another one of our recent digital ads here, and since I've been showing you those, I thought I'd mention that for the Third Night Free campaign. Was about a two-month run, reaching 712,963 people within the greater LA destination marketing area. It served 1,700,847 impressions between September 30th and October 30th, drove 11,725 link clicks, generated 10,461 landing page views for that promotion, we had a landing page specific to the Third Night Free, and resulted in 11,459 clicks to partner properties from our promotional landing page. It's important to keep in mind that that booking tool, the Book Direct tool, was the vehicle for this, and once the user transits to the lodging property, we can't see the data after that. So the final conversion, I can't track for, but I can take them right to the water, and then they gotta go drink on their own. So here you'll see some of the things we're working on and with notes regarding our upcoming events, including Shop Catalina, which is slated for the first Saturday in December. In preparation with that, we're working with Avalon Beautiful and the City to enhance the lighting program, which Denise already talked about. I didn't hear you say Denise, so I'll pitch it here, that we're also hosting a store and home decorating contest, so there will be a first, second, and third place prize given to the best decorated stores, and likewise for residences. And we are going to experiment with a greatly reduced human touch aspect and crowd gathering aspect by creating a landing page that's specific to Shop Catalina, that you can pre-download on your smartphone, you don't have to have connectivity during the event. And then at each store, there will be a phrase or a secret word or whatever that will be your check-in, rather than getting a stamp, you will type that in to the device. So at least that's the plan, and my staff will probably sweat in bullets hearing me say it right now out loud. So that's a summary of our current state of affairs and audit results. You have the detailed audit in hand, and it's also a little bit of an outlook on our immediate future. We continue to balance working in a variety of modes, survival mode, recovery mode, and all the while trying to keep a positive outlook for our future visitors and encourage them to come. We intend to work with the city going forward to enhance the residents' quality of life by bringing visitors to the community, whose expenditures will fund our local economy, and in particular, the city's general fund. And we seek to be a responsive, relevant, and resilient partner in the city in doing that, and it would be my hope that if you ever feel we are not being that, to let me know. And with that, I'm open to any questions.
Council questions or comments? No, thank you, it's very thorough, and this is on the website, on yours and on our website, correct?
Yes, I'm not sure if it's posted on yours yet, but it is posted on our website.
Okay, so anybody out there that's curious, you can take a peek?
Yes.
And this report won't be, this whole, this...
No, I don't think we normally put that up there, but I'll see if I can.
Okay, but yeah, if you could put it on yours, it might be, because that's, that's, this is informative, but this is really great.
That's numbers, this is facts.
Yeah, exactly.
So I'll try to put it on the website as well.
If you can, I know you guys are busy, but, okay, well, thank you.
Good job, Jim.
Thank you.
And I just want to commend Jim on the work that he has done behind the scenes of keeping the chamber funded, the applications that he has filled out for loans or support, being involved in Visit California, that, I mean, he has done an amazing job to keep this organization running, so kudos to you, Jim.
Yeah, I agree, thank you.
I think in addition to that, if I can just add the amount of communication that you have done in between and on behalf of the city with residents and business owners, and what your team has done to keep that microsite up to date has been phenomenal and beyond help. I probably refer to it at least two to three times a week, so thank you very much.
That's great, thank you. Okay. We're on item number...
Okay, item number six, I just have a couple things to say before you continue, okay? I just do want to note it again that there were eight written communications asking for two things. It was either to postpone the decision or to adopt the licenses going forward and to leave the existing CUPs as is. In regards to the request from Mayor Pro-Tim Cassidy, I want it noted that we did publicly notice this, and we can open and continue the public hearing, but you would have to have a definite date in which you're going to continue it to. You would need three votes to pass this this evening. You could punt it also back to the Planning Commission to have them receive all the public comments, and they could come back to you for first reading. And with that, I'll let you continue if you're going to hear this tonight, and then Michael Palmer, who is our acting planning director, can lead you through a very nice PowerPoint presentation of the ordinance. So we'll wait your direction.
I'll be the first one to say, I don't feel the need to take it back to the Planning Commission. We've been discussing this for years, and the Planning Commission really did a thorough job, and to come up with what they came up with, I commend them for that, because, you know, you have realtors on the board, and you have other folks that rent homes, and so for them to come up with this, I think that's great. I think for people who don't like postpone this, they don't know what's going on, I would just like to say, if I had a piece of property in another town and I was doing this kind of business, I would keep in touch. You can go on the City of Avalon website, our agendas are always there, the Planning Commission agendas are there.
Yes, they are.
They are.
They are.
At the time of the Planning Commission meeting, that check was nothing up to the Planning Commission.
That is not correct, Mary, it is there.
Well, they haven't done, the Planning Commission planted this back to us a while ago, so it wouldn't have been the last Planning Commission meeting, it would have been previous to that.
It was in March.
Yeah, there's nothing on that website.
Okay, he'll look it up. So anyway, but, and the newspaper, everything is a public hearing, goes into the newspaper, so I think it's, because I was rather shocked that we had eight different people saying they didn't know what's going on. If I had my house registered with CIVR or Hamilton Cove, I would believe that, because they've been knowing this conversation's been going on, and I don't think Thomas or, and Bart is on the Planning Commission, so I would think that it would be incumbent upon them to let them, to let you all know what's happening, because they're managing your properties. So don't mean to sound not too sympathetic, but I know I've been on the council for six years, or going on seven, and we've discussed it numerous times in seven years. So to just be hearing about this, I don't understand. So anyway, that's just my little, my little thing, but whatever you all want to do tonight...
I'll just add to that, that it is in the report summary that we really pushed this forward in late 2018, so it's been two years that we've been waiting for the Planning Commission to get to this point. And I believe that all the work that has been done is fantastic and whatnot. My only request was that we have a council of five to make such a monumental decision, that was all I was asking.
Yeah, I understand.
I think I'm more in tune potentially with Annie's, and not knowing necessarily when we'll be a council of five again, is my only hesitation in saying that we should open and continue, just because we don't know when that would take place. I would assume it would be potentially even in this early spring if that was to happen.
But if we open and continue, we'd have to have a date for the continuance, right?
That is correct, Michael.
Then we can't open the hearing and then set a date if we don't know.
Right.
No, this is the city attorney, if you don't continue it to a date, then we have to renotice it again, which just involves putting the ad in the newspaper, so that would be the cost of not continuing it to a certain date.
Well, then there's two, typically two opportunities for people to comment, correct? So if we just postponed it all the way, that's one thing, but if we had the first reading and opened it today and got comments, then there's still the second one, it's not like there's another first and second one, right?
That is correct, although if you have a first reading today, and you receive comments, and then you change your mind at the second reading, and then you make changes at the second reading, then the second reading becomes the first reading with the changes, and then you just go to the meeting after that.
That's just what Denise was going to say.
I don't mean to complicate it, I just...
I have no problem pulling it and scheduling it another time.
Right, and so you all have seen the document, have you?
To leave the presentation.
Okay, okay. Well, then, this whole agenda item, this whole agenda packet?
It was published on our website last Wednesday night.
Oh, okay, okay. All righty, so do we have to vote to hold it over, we just say we're just not, we're going to pull it and that's it?
We would have to have consensus to move forward this evening, yes.
Right, okay. Well, do you want to make a motion, or...
How would that, how would that motion be? I would make a motion to open the public hearing and hold it over, or I guess I don't understand what...
Or we just pull it?
We just pull it.
And put it on another day?
And then we have to renotice it?
Then we renotice.
I mean, is that the consensus of, or would you guys like to go ahead and just push forward, given that the Planning Commission has given their recommendation? forward, given that the Planning Commission has given their recommendations?
May I ask a question?
Not, not, not yet. Not yet. Not yet. Not yet.
The hesitation I have is in the fact that the majority of concerns think that there's either a lack of transparency or a lack of knowledge. And neither of those things is true. It was posted earlier than most of these agendas usually are, with a couple of extra days to be able to review the topic. And there is nothing regarding transparency that the city hasn't done. It's been publicly noticed and posted on the website. So my hesitation in holding it over is that those claims I don't believe are true. So I appreciate the concern of wanting to have a full council here for this vote. And, but I also think that we have a quorum. We have an item that has been well discussed, well vetted, well discussed again, and well vetted again, and has come before us for a vote and has been noticed in the way that most everything usually is. I don't know that I would support holding it over. I can understand if people feel the need to, I'm not sure why you would not have both the time and ability to travel right now, other than having concerns about COVID. But there were even comments made about not being able to make comment, and clearly that is not the case. So...
And I'm just concerned with what you had said.
Right.
But I also have to agree with, I'm sorry, but for, since 2018, it was part of Planning Commission's discussions, it's been going on for a long time.
We had joint meetings with the Planning Commission.
Yeah. So it's not like this is not, like it's a complete surprise that this was on the radar. And I even asked a few months ago when this was going to come to us, and it still needed to go back to the Planning Commission for some tidying up and final vote to send it to us. And this was pre-COVID. So COVID kind of put a stop at it, and then now it's come to us. But yeah, no, it's something that has been discussed and that your representatives of, if you have a vacation rental that's managed by a company here, then that was their mistake of not notifying their tenants or their property owners that this was going to happen. So I, so it, yeah, I have no problem continuing on and opening the hearing.
I, I have no problem with withdrawing my request to, to hold it over. Like I said, my only request, nothing to do with the comments that were made in public, public letters. It was specifically for Councilmember De La Rosa to be participative in such a monumental decision. That, that was the sole reason for it. So I agree with the comments that you guys have made in having this discussion, that we've been talking about this for a while, that I, I was not aware that we, we would potentially be looking at January, February, March. So with that, then...
I'm just saying January would be...
Yeah.
Tonight was unexpected and definitely December's out.
Okay. So with that, I would be happy to move forward.
Okay. And since these people either flew or however you got here, so they, so they can say what they want to say. So I will open the public hearing.
Do you want to have Mr. Palmer go through the PowerPoint presentation?
Oh, yeah. Go ahead.
That will answer a lot of questions, I think.
Sure. So good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Mike Palmer, Assistant City Manager and Acting Planning Director. The item before you this evening is a public hearing regarding the first reading of an ordinance of the Avalon Municipal Code to establish a new transient rental licensing system. This item was first discussed, as previously mentioned, at a joint City Council and Planning Commission meeting on September 19th, 2018. Since then, over the course of the 26 months, this has been discussed at various Planning Commission and City Council meetings. On December 18th, 2019, a draft ordinance was presented and discussed by the Planning Commission. Following the discussions from that meeting, Planning Commission directed city staff to seek clarification and direction from City Council regarding saturation limits, amortization of existing permits, and changing the transient rental license entitlement from a land use regulation or a conditional use permit, or CUP, I'll use those interchangeably, to a non-land use entitlement or a license. Following City Council's direction at their February 4th, 2020 meeting, a revised draft ordinance was submitted back to the Planning Commission and was scheduled to be considered for recommendation to the council at the regular April Planning Commission. The item was unexpectedly delayed, due in part to the COVID-19 pandemic and then subsequent staffing changes as well. The item was subsequently brought back to the Planning Commission in October for consideration. I would like to note, there was an issue with public comments at the October 2020 meeting. The agenda and website correctly listed the means by which public comment could be made. However, a notice that went out to the Catalina Islander was from an older template and incorrectly listed an unmonitored telephone number and email address. The city received one public comment via email that stated in the subject line, "Not enough time for public comment by phone," and a voicemail that expressed frustration with receiving the answering machine. Following the meeting, staff consulted with the city attorney's office and proceeded forward, noticing the item for council's consideration. The current ordinance before the council proposes to change the current regulation, how transient rentals are regulated, from a land use entitlement or CUP to the transient rental license. To address concerns from current CUP holders, the ordinance as directed by council in February 2020 proposes to keep the CUP in place until the property is sold twice, upon which the CUP would immediately expire and the second buyer would need to apply for a transient rental license. So if I had a house and I were to sell it to Denise, Denise would benefit as the first buyer from that CUP, and she would be able to retain the CUP. But if she wanted to sell it to Matt or someone else, then that new property owner would then automatically have the CUP expire, and then they would be responsible under this proposal to obtain a license. This proposal is due in part to concerns previously expressed by the city that is currently limiting in how it regulates new owners of properties with existing CUPs. Transitioning to a licensed system would require all new owners of the housing to demonstrate their understanding and ability to comply with transient occupancy requirements, as well as give the public the right to participate in the decision-making process. So that was kind of the logic behind that. Under this guise or under this scheme, the transient rental license, if approved, would then be renewed annually on or before January 1st of each year. And this is no different than how our business licenses currently operate. So it would run in parallel. Also, under this proposal, all fees for filing and processing a transient rental license would be the same as a transient rental CUP until a revised fee has been set by resolution. If approved, today, we would have the second reading, and then this ordinance would go into effect on February 1st, 2021. We extended it out to give staff some additional time to make the necessary changes behind the scenes in order to move forward with that. And one of those mechanisms would be coming up with a new rental fee that would be more commensurate with the appropriate amount of managing the license rather than managing the CUP. Right now, the CUP application fee is, is quite high. So in terms of the CUP process, approval process, right now, as proposed, there would be no changes. So the current existing CUP approval process would remain intact under this proposed ordinance. This would include the license application and hearing by the Planning Commission, the minimum 10-day public notice of the hearing, as well as notification to property owners within the 300-foot radius of the subject applicant, and a posted sign. The Planning Commission also, in their normal process, looks at things like the impact to public health and safety and general welfare to the property and other persons located in the vicinity, the site for the proposed transient rental license, also consideration of certain conditions, year-end rental status, and a few other items. Planning Commission, under this proposal, would reconsider the public notice requirements and the approval process two years after adoption. And essentially, they would have a decision to make whether to continue to keep the process the same and have the license, anybody applying for a license, be approved at a Planning Commission hearing, or give the staff the authority to administratively approve the license without a public Planning Commission hearing.
And then there would be no public comment?
Then there would be no public comment, correct. But as is, everything would stay the same until two years after, and then the Planning Commission would need to decide how, how best they to proceed forward.
So 2023?
Correct.
Place of...
So in terms of requirements and standards, right now, the requirements and standards for approving the license would remain the same as well, under the purview of the Planning Commission. Appeals of the Planning Commission decision is heard by the City Council, and none of that changes as well. So there, there's, the biggest crux on that is how the proposal is treating the regulation of transient rentals. And that's really moving it away from the CUP process that it's currently regulated through, which runs with the land, and changing that eventually into a licensed system. So with that, it's staff's recommendation to introduce and waive all further readings of the ordinance of the City of Avalon, amending section 9-6.602 of Article 6 of Chapter 6 of Title IX of the Avalon Municipal Code, deleting subsections D through F of Section 8-8.404 of Article 4 of Chapter 8 of Title IX of the Avalon Municipal Code, and adding a new Article 3 to Chapter 1 of Title 3 of the AMC to establish a new transient rental licensing system. And with that concludes my presentation. I'm open for any questions, and you can also open up the public hearing.
Can I, can I ask you a question?
This is Scott. I have, I have a couple additional comments after council questions, or I can go right now before?
My question is for you, Scott. If you can add this to your comments, if you can explain how, let me find my words, how we can legally change from a CUP to a license? That was a question that was posed to me is, is how, is that legal that we are able to do that? And is this the process in which that can make that happen? And I hope that makes sense.
No, I saw that too.
Yes, I was going to absolutely address that. And so what, what I would say is this, there is a slightly amended version of the ordinance that just has some typos that we have corrected. It is also has a whereas that we've added to, to talk more about this substance. And then the Planning Commission also wanted this to be able to be passed, the license to be passed, or, or, or the CUP to be passed to their immediate family or grandchildren. And so we added the word grandchildren in to the family members that, that you could pass this to. With respect to the, what's called the amortization, in other words, right now, the entitlement of a CUP runs with the land and keeps with the property forever. And one of the considerations of the Planning Commission was, if that's done, the city doesn't know and the neighbors don't know who is taking over the property. Is there a, does the person taking over the property understand the process? Are they going to be a good steward of, of the land? And so we were asked to look at ways in which to tighten that up. And the amortization is, is the way to do that, which basically says that after a certain period of time in which you have enjoyed a reasonable return on, on your investment, that we can change the entitlement. Usually that's maybe a five to 10-year period. Two cities that have looked at this and have done the exact same thing as Avalon did, said that it was a reasonable period for that to be two years. In other words, you keep your CUP for two years. After that, it automatically converts into a license. In our discussion and also meeting with CIVR, we determined to go the longest of anyone, which is actually two sales. So if you have your property now and you never sell it, or you give it to a family member, it, it remains a CUP. If you sell it to someone, in 50 years from now, and that person sells it for 40 years, then for 90 years, it remains a CUP. And then after that, 90 years after the second sale, it becomes a license where they have to reapply again. We're not saying that people aren't, would not get it after it expires as a CUP. They just have to go through the process to appear before the Planning Commission to get a license. So we've looked at this. We've analyzed this. It is legal to do this. And the question before the council is a policy question. Do you want to change, there are really two issues. One issue is going forward for new CUPs, do you want to have them be licenses so that they only go to the owner of the property in which you grant the, the entitlement for? That's the first one. And I would note that the comments from the public seem to all agree that that's fine. Then the second issue, policy issue, is for those people that have existing CUPs, or for people that have grandfathered CUPs, do you want to adopt the regulation that says after the second sale of the property, that that person has to get a license for the CUP? If you have to answer any questions?
So I have a question. So I have two children, and it comes time for, they're, they're not going to agree, and the kid say, okay, you got to buy me out. You know, one of the kids says, you got to buy me out. That's, is that kind of, that is, in a way, a sale, is it not?
Under the ordinance as drafted and determined by the Planning Commission, that would be the first sale of it.
It would. But I, I could leave, I could leave it to my son, that's not considered a sale. But if the children amongst themselves sell it to each other, then that is a sale.
No, no. The Planning Commission determined that if you, if you granted it to your child, that that would constitute the first sale of the property.
Oh, it would? Okay.
Yeah. And just for clarification, it's up there on the, the slide. It might be a little hard to see, but it says transfers to immediate family via gift, grant, or trust would constitute the first sale.
First of two sales. Okay. Thank you.
Unless they did that prior to taking that.
And just so it is clear, for licenses going forward, licenses going forward are non-transferable. In other words, if you get it, you just can't give it to, to someone else. We made an exception for licenses. If you give it to a member of your family, that is transferable, so they don't have to go through the process to get a new license. That's the one exception to the non-transferability rule. So for licenses, you can transfer it once to a member of your family.
For licenses, you say again?
You can transfer once to a member of your family without having that person apply for a new license and go through the process.
Okay.
So that way, we keep it with, you know, existing families.
Right. Okay.
Licenses. For, for, for CUPs, it can remain with the existing family for one generation. And then if it's the second generation or the first generation who gets the property, they sell the property. At that point, they have to apply for a license. So we anticipate that most of these properties will remain CUPs for many decades to come.
Oh, of course they will. And then you were talking about that thing about amortization. I know that's kind of a, you know, some of these people have owned these places for 30 and 40 years, or I don't know how long the CUPs have been. How long the CUP has been around?
Since the mid-'90s.
Mid-'90s. So for 30, almost 30 years, people have done quite well by those. And I don't know, we're not going to look at it today, but sometimes I think this amortization, if you've had it for 30 years, and, and we can go back and see, I think we go back and see what people have contributed to the city based on TOT. And I know that one of my bones of contention is that they pay for their business license every year. They basically just sit on it. They don't rent it out. It doesn't do us any good. It takes housing out of the housing stock for locals. So I think that's part of the start of some of this is, you know, I'm happy for them making money, but if it, I mean, they're not making money on it. They're just sitting on it. And we've had realtors say it does increase the value of their home if they have a CUP. So of course, nobody can tell how much, but we've heard numbers before. So anyway, I mean, personally, I'd like it to go with the first sale. But, but after all the hard work the Planning Commission has done, and, and to honor kind of what they've worked out, I'm, I'm feeling that that's reasonable. But... So are we in comments? Or do you want comments from the audience?
I think we need to open them.
Yeah. Okay. We're going to open the public hearing. We're going to open the public hearing. Okay.
Just on what you're currently talking about, so the people that own these properties, that say have had them for 30 years, we haven't, but we do plan on, it is in a trust, and we plan on giving it to our kids. And our kids are more interested in coming over here than the fact that it makes money. It doesn't really make money, it just kind of covers itself.
I understand.
So I'm not making a fortune on this, I'm just kind of breaking even at the end of the year. And often, I don't break even. I have a sewer problem, and that's probably going to cost me three grand, so I'm not breaking even this year, for sure. Anyhow, run with the land, I'm not sure that you can change that. He has a different opinion. I'm not sure that that's technically feasible. I think you should leave the conditional permit process alone. As I understand it, because we have one of the old CUPs, that we won't have to get a transient rental license? Or we will?
You would not, not until you sold the property, and then that person would get the CUP, and then the second one would?
Right.
Okay. So, you know, I'd be willing to even go into the transient rental program, but you guys making the rules. I don't know what she wants to do, but that's what I'm seeing. But if you kill the transient rentals, where are the tourists going to stay? As I understand it, last time I looked at the city budget, 50% of the budget comes from TOT, and 50% comes from the boats. And if you want to kill the golden goose, this is, you know, one way to go about it. You really have to consider your income, the city's income, not my income, the city's income, from these transient rentals.
But I think what you're supposing, though, or proposing, is that on that second sale, a license wouldn't be issued, and that's not the case at all?
It would be issued, I understand that, yes.
And you're talking 50 to 70 years down the line, probably, for most of these?
Well, but it's... But the people that are in this boat are not... I'm 74, so I've already, you know, it's not going to be one generation or two generations, it's going to be one generation, in our case, because it goes to them. They're 50 years old. How long are they going to live? 20, 30 years, 40 years? So it's not 90 years or something like that, or two cases of 90 years.
So, but you're anticipating, then, when you say that, because when your children then sell it, you're anticipating that they're going to get more money for the seller of that property because it has a CUP?
They'll never sell it. That's the plan.
Well, so then, you're a moot case, because it'll never change.
Right. But you're talking about two generations. It's not two generations, or 90 years. That's a ridiculous number, in my estimation.
No, but you're actually, you're just saying you're going to keep the house forever, and your children are going to keep it forever.
Right.
So...
And whether or not they rent it is up to them, but...
So it won't affect you at all? You'll just always have a CUP?
Well, no, it would, because each transfer to a generation, or skipping a generation, counts as a transfer. So you get two generational transfers. You could transfer it under the ordinance as drafted, you can transfer it to your grandchild, and then for the life of the grandchild, that counts as the first transfer. And then that grandchild could transfer it to that grandchild's grandchild, that's the second transfer.
I get it. But what he was saying was it will be through his lifetime and his children, and that'll be the end of it.
Or his grandchildren, if he gives it to his grandchild.
He's acting like it's going through him and his kids.
It doesn't say grandchildren up there, that I can see.
No, we have, that's what I said, the Planning Commission asked for that, and we added that to the ordinances before the council tonight.
That would obviously make it more palatable for...
Yeah.
I think, for most people. I think the sticking point is the trust. The reason we put this stuff into the trust is for tax purposes and inheritance purposes, so we don't have to go through a bunch of crap for that. And so to penalize us for putting it in a trust, it doesn't seem reasonable. I think you should allow it.
Actually, the ordinance as drafted allows a trust to get it, and that, and again, it can go through a trust, and that is valid, that is not, that is not trigger a sale. A trust is, is...
It triggers the first sale.
Stays in the trust and always remains in the trust, and never goes out of the trust, then there's not a sale triggered, or a transfer triggered.
Scott, if I... It's Cindy, obviously. If I understand what you're saying, if, if the... Sheding, is that your last name?
Sheding, yes.
If the Sheding Trust owns the property as it is now, and only the trustees of the trust change, but the property, the actual land, doesn't change ownership, then that does not trigger the sale, is that correct?
Let me look at the exact language of the ordinance I...
So if Mr. Sheding owns the property in his name, that's one thing, but if that would constitute a sale if it went to one of his children. But if the trust currently owns the property, and the only thing that's changing is the trustees in the trust at whichever point, then does that constitute a sale?
It might get a little messy, because if I pass away first, then she gets the property, because she's in the trust.
It's what's on the deed. If the deed doesn't change, then it doesn't constitute a sale. That's my question.
Or as part of, if it says a family trust, if it remains in the family trust and doesn't change, then that's not a sale under, that can remain in the family trust even if there are people changing. It's tied to the trust itself.
I don't know what that means.
So really, the way it's defined there says, "For purposes of the section, a permissible transfer shall only mean a one-time permissible transfer of a transient rental license or conditional use permit by grant or gift to immediate family members defined as spouses, siblings, children, grandchildren, or parents, or as part of a family trust. A transfer in the event of the death of a licensee or permissee to any of the immediate family members defined in this section shall not be prohibited under this section and shall qualify as a one-time permissible transfer."
Got it. So if you drop dead, you're okay?
So the trust is going to be the first transfer, is what he's saying?
Yes, and then the trust can last for as long as the trust keeps it. It can remain forever, under this ordinance.
I don't think it's clear, I'm sorry, but we'll go on, because my two minutes, I'm probably, it's almost near the end. Sorry. I appreciate the interchange. I'm a former unpaid elected official of the City of Los Angeles. We had these neighborhood councils, and I was on the neighborhood council. And so we had to deal with a lot of land use matters.
No doubt.
And I'm deadly aware of the Brown Act. And with all due respect, I think the meeting that the Planning Commission had violated the Brown Act, because of the public comment stuff wasn't available, wasn't able to do, and the notification stuff, if you put it in the paper and post it at the library, I don't see that in Mar Vista.
Right.
You know, with a new website and stuff like that, maybe, but then I have to be aware of it, and I think you need some outreach, and that's some of the comments I've made to him, is you need to have some outreach to these people, to let them know that this is what you're doing.
If I owned a piece of property somewhere, I would be looking, I think every city has a website, and I don't think it hurts to take five minutes every couple of weeks to say, "What's going on in Avalon?" I think it's a personal responsibility.
Okay, but I think, considering the response that you got from the people that have property, the small response you got from people in a property, other than the fact that we fired up CIVR, you know, nobody else, Sue, Andrews, and us have been the only people that ever contacted you, I think.
Well, maybe everybody else thinks it's just fine, and so they didn't, because people only comment when it's negative, right?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
The other thing that, at the Planning Commission meeting, and not to pick on anybody, but there was a proposal to convert a house into a house, and a transient rental and a full-time rental. I don't know what you would call it, say a...
Year-round rental.
Year-round rental for people that live here. Okay, so you have that. But what you're actually doing, and I don't know how you can enforce the second part of that. You have a transient rental permit, but you don't have a, "I got to keep this as a local rental property only." I don't know how you can enforce that. So that's eventually going to fade off into two transient rentals. And so you're reducing, by letting these people expand their property and make more income from that property, you're actually reducing, you're going against your general plan, which says you want to reduce the amount of transient rentals. You see what I'm saying?
No.
If you let somebody, let's say we wanted to add a second story to our house, and we promised to make the second story transient rental, and the first story local rental, if we can use that term. How are you going to enforce, you can enforce this one, because you have a transient rental permit, but the bottom one, how are you going to enforce, make somebody sign in blood that they're going to keep this a local rental thing? Couple years later, they decide they don't want to do that, and they had a bad experience with a local or something like that, then they want to make this a transient rental. So now you...
Yeah, but I understand, there's something in the books that if you've rented on a year-round basis, and you don't anymore, because I've been a bad tenant, it has, you cannot request a CUP for two years. So that kind of helps with that. Also, because of the other things about how many houses around and whatever, because I still think they should go before the Planning Commission, not just the city right at this moment, then they will decide if they want to give another CUP or not. So it's not going to, you can't just turn into a CUP because you have two units.
No, that's a CUP issue. Your plan, you're trying to achieve some goal for the general city plan.
Right.
The general city plan is, in general, I would characterize as reduce the number of transient rentals. That's the goal.
I don't believe that's the goal.
You want to increase rental property for locals. Isn't that the goal? To make more property available for people that can't afford houses and have to rent?
Denise, did you want to...
I'll just say this, the purpose of the ordinance and what the Planning Commission did over the course of several years was balance the general plan's statement that this is a, that we need to have a tourism-friendly city while preserving full-time housing for residents. And so part of this process is having a CUP issue, and having a license issue where the city can regulate that, and that's why it comes before the Planning Commission on each and every one, is for the Planning Commission to determine, is this good for the economy? Is this good for tourism? Is this, does this impact, or does this reduce the ability to rent it, or to have full-time residents there? And that weighing has been done over the last two years, and the ordinance before the council is what the Planning Commission recommended to do.
Okay. So one final point, I have, the house behind me is being rented, not through the program. He's not paying any TOT. He's just making money off of his property. And what percentage of the houses that your friends and neighbors have that live here that are renting them, that are not contributing to TOT?
You mean renting them illegally without CUPs?
Say again?
Renting them without CUPs?
Yes.
Oh, we'd love to know who those people are.
And just to clarify, the city does periodically check. We just went through a whole process with host compliance, where we did an audit and tried to look to see who was advertising on places like VRBO, Airbnb, and then double-checked that with the licensing system. So there are checks in there, we're not going to catch everybody, but we are actively involved in trying to chase down illegal transient rentals.
I appreciate that, because that's been stuck in my craw all along.
Please give us an address. We, yeah, you know, we found people that were renting golf carts to people in transient rentals, and we've been trying to get a handle on that, too. I mean, so people that want to just take and not give.
Well, thank you for your time and consideration.
And now your wife, now your wife of 54 years is going to come up.
I don't know if she has that more to say. She always has more to say.
You don't have to wipe it down between us.
What's that?
Oh, okay. Well, I'm Susan Sheding, and thank you, first of all, for everything you do. I do appreciate it. I've talked to Mike a couple of times, he's been extremely helpful and informative. I'm going to strike a little more conciliatory tone. First of all, a lot of the problems that Avalon is facing today, well, the two big ones, housing and money, are the same problems that cities are facing everywhere. And I just want to tell you, we've got, you know, some of those same issues where we are in Mar Vista, which is Venice, Santa Monica area. And so I want you to know, we are your advocates, not your adversaries. And we are facing the same problems in our little towns and cities, and I feel that we can bring our experiences and perspectives to the problems that you're facing as well. And I'm going to just go off topic for 30 seconds to suggest that perhaps, this would also solve the problem of communication, that you have a non-paid, non-voting member of absentee property owners sit on your city planning commission or the council. It's just an idea. So there's that. Also, I mean, I think bright, creative people solve problems, and I believe you are bright, creative people. And I think that that's another reason to get input from those of us that spend more of our time off the island than on, because we've seen some really interesting solutions to these problems. And I've learned you have to consider every idea, no matter how small or how silly it may sound, you know, just check them out, and there is no magic bullet or cure-all for these problems. Having said that, I do, as my husband pointed out, and I'm glad to hear Mike's response to that, there is TOT not being collected. Go get it from those people. I mean, we pay our fair share, we're happy to do that, but there, but that's just one suggestion. The other thing with money is, we don't live here full-time. I wish I could, actually. Bill's still working, and we now have grandchildren in Overtown, blah, blah, blah. But that means having, getting ready to now pay my property taxes for the year. I'm painfully reminded that, this not being my primary residence, we do pay substantially more in property taxes for our homes here in Avalon. So we donate to the hospital fund, the museum, Fourth of July event, and we're happy to contribute to the well-being of Avalon in any way we can, but I don't believe that includes taking away our CUPs that run with the land. I will say that. The other thing I have to say, and this is just a bit of a scold, but it made me really upset, so I have to bring it up. For the next 10 years, Avalon is not likely to be getting its fair share of federal money that could have helped you people with housing and the hospital and schools. I don't mean you people, I mean the town of Avalon. The reason being that approximately 72% of Avalon residents didn't bother to fill out and return their 2020 census. So there's a lot of money left on the table that could have been definitely used here. So in that respect, those people who didn't return their census have failed the town. And that I find particularly appalling. I did see, and I do go online, and I did see on the Chamber of Commerce website, there was a reminder about that, and I saw one in the arcade the other day, but I don't know how this happened. It just kind of boggles the mind, because that's trillions of dollars, federal funds that are going to be giving out, given out to towns in the state, in the states. And Avalon certainly deserved more than it's probably going to get, and that's a shame. So 10 years down the road, I'll do anything I can to help get the word out, even if it means coming over here and sleeping on the beach, because it's just, it took us three minutes to do that online, and that's just foolish to let that go. So, you know, the housing issue, it's just the cycle of life. If you gave everybody in Avalon that's 20 years older, older today, if you gave them a house tomorrow, in 10 years, your, today's 10-year-olds are going to need their own homes, too. So you've got to, we have to come up with really creative ideas on how to house the population.
You're exactly right.
And I'm very happy to help, but I don't want to be, I don't think the owner should be all on us. It's just, not all on us, but heavily on us to help solve that problem. I'm happy to do whatever I can, but...
We appreciate that. And you know what? You need to have an offline conversation with Lisa.
Okay.
She was our census expert over here, and...
It was better than it was post-online, just so you know, which is good.
It's what?
The census amount was actually higher than what was...
Did it come up?
...reported online. So just the, in the last week, they had reported that we were up to 89% completion, and thought that it had actually got... and thought that it had actually gone higher than that, so.
That's good.
Yeah, very good. I agree and share your concern with that too. I know it's, it can be very frustrating when people choose not to do that, so.
It can be.
Yes.
And part of our problem was, the census, they were beating the streets. They knocked on my door four or five different times, beating the streets. But there's so many people that don't live in these houses. So we really only have, you know, 50% of our housing stock isn't lived in by locals.
Is it 50%?
Just about, yeah. So all.
That's not true.
Flats, I have, I have a lot of vacation rentals on this council. So that was part of the problem as well.
And just finally, in our own behalf, or our own defense, we're both very computer savvy and do check things out. But, and we get the Islander, but we don't get it till Monday or Tuesday of the following week.
Either do we.
Okay, that's funny.
Don't feel special.
And during the postal slowdown, we were getting it June's additions in October.
Totally.
Also, we were aware that there were changes being proposed. But I have never seen until tonight the proposal in its entirety. I've only seen a summation, and I have no idea what the fees would be. So that's something, you know, that needs to get out there, out. And also, we are in our 70s. And we, the last time we were here was the first weekend in March, and we did not feel safe, you know, coming back for your meetings or for Planning Commission meetings.
I understand.
I do want us, I want us to set the record straight. We have a family trust. Our property, when the second one of us passes away, and I know who the second one's going to be, will pass to our children. So I understand that is the first, that's a transfer of ownership. So that would be considered the first sale, correct?
It's in a trust though, correct?
Well.
If it stays in the trust.
If you put it into a trust, if you give it to a child, that's the first sale. If you give it to a trust, that's also the first sale.
Yes.
But if it's already, is it already in a trust though, or not yet?
Yes, it's in the trust already.
Right, Scott's saying if you're putting it from a person into a trust is what he's saying is the first sale, not if it's in the trust now.
It's in the trust now, the property goes to our children. And we've been, we're newcomers, we've only come over since 1982. So, but we love this little town, so. Anyway, thank you for all you do, and I'd like to give everybody else an opportunity to sell a case.
And I just, I just wanted to make a comment on the property tax part of it. You may be paying a higher property tax, but the city of Avalon is not getting that higher amount. It's the way we're all set up. Our proportion of property tax is like 7%, 4%, or 10% at the most of what the actual, the county gets the rest.
Yeah, well, all right, but the county does.
Yeah, it doesn't, that's why we have the TOT, is that's how we make our money, because we don't make it off of property taxes.
And the other thing is, our property tax has our sewer, our saltwater, and our trash on there, which years ago, you would get those bills separate. So that's why it looks higher too, because those are all on your property tax bill instead of getting a monthly bill from the city for that other stuff.
Well, I do hope you get some of that money.
No, never. Up to the mic though, up to the mic.
And then we need to move on to.
I know.
It just seems unfair that Hamilton Cove gets a buy. You want a CUP, they want, give it to Hamilton Cove, because it's not in your hair, so to speak.
No, I hear what you're saying, but nobody out at, nobody out at Hamilton Cove ever objects.
Based on a couple of comments, I just want, I'm remembering a comment that was made to me in passing a couple of days ago that, from a full-time resident that owns a property here on the island that does not have a CUP, that there, we've already discussed that there is a premium that comes with these properties. And that premium increases the price of the property, which in turn increases all the property values in that close proximity, which means you have a CUP, your property is of value, you're increasing mine, which is increasing my property taxes as well. And so that was a comment that somebody had made, is that it's not fair that my property taxes need to go up because you have a premium on yours. And I'm just passing that along as a conversation point that it does, it does have an effect on everybody.
And I do not believe that, I didn't mean to make it sound like I thought it was unfair.
Yeah. I understand, okay. Yes, sir.
Hello, hi, I'm Andrew O'Rourke. And let's see, just, I just heard about this through another friend of ours that has a house here. And ignorantly, I don't check the website, which I should, but we're not with CIVR. So we weren't aware of it, I wasn't aware a couple of years ago. We've had our property in our family since 72, and it's changed within the family four times. Okay? We, my husband and I bought it from the family last time. And we have two kids. We've invested a lot of money in our property because of the CUP. And we've increased the revenue for ourselves and for the island because we continually invest in our property. This property, for us, is part of our retirement and also to help take care of our kids. Our, we have a 12-year-old son, and he's got cerebral palsy. So we have to make sure that our son is taken care of when he's older.
Yes.
Okay? If it transfers to one of us when we die, then it's going to transfer to our son. And then who is going to be taking care of our son? So for us, it's a little different. The grandfathering of the CUP would be more important for us. We just adopted an 18-month-old. Our daughter's 18 months old, but we adopted her when she was three months old. That's irrelevant. But again, so then there's two siblings. We found out she might have issues. Okay, so for us to be worried about the transfer within a trust and the taking care of our kids, when they're older, our son is going to have to require a lot of other services and things throughout his life. Okay? I don't want to, I'm 55, my husband's 60. We don't want to be worried when they have to start taking care of us, but our son can't really take care of him. So for us to be worried about it transferring and who's taking care of who with this property, we don't ever plan on selling it, but it will probably transfer.
Right.
And so my concern is that. I think that all the CUPs, from my perspective, that are CUPs, they should be grandfathered. All the new ones that anyone wants to get, go ahead, go ahead and do that. But it doesn't seem fair to penalize people in a situation like this when we're constantly improving our property to generate more business for the island because we love it. We bring our son over here, he's in a walker, he's learning to walk with arm crutches, and it's really easy for him. We are over here all the time because of our kids, it's easy for our kids. It's not easy, we live and read on the beach, it's close for us. But again, this is an investment for us, and I don't want to. My husband said, "Well, why are you going to that meeting? Why are you so concerned? It's two sales." And I said, "Yeah, but it's not just the two sales. We don't know how you guys are going to write it. So it's all how it's going to be written." I'm concerned that it's, there's going to be some way that it's written, that there's going to be something not written correctly that it's going to affect us or affect our kids later on. So that's my biggest concern. I don't want to take up a lot of your time. I just really, really want you all to really think about this. And if, so this is the first reading of it, and there's going to be another one, correct?
Yes.
And so at that next one, is that one, you're going to vote on it to make it a?
Whenever we schedule it, it's not necessarily going to be in two weeks, but yes.
Okay, so there's going to be another one, and then from that date on, then it'll be two years from then, then it's going to go into effect, or how does that work?
Yes, basically.
So you have, this is the first reading. If council ends up approving this, it'll go for a second reading. That's typically done on consent calendar at a subsequent meeting. If they adopt it at the second meeting, it'll go on into effect beginning on February 1st, 2021.
So it'll happen that quickly?
It'll happen that quickly. The two-year mark was two years after adoption, so two years from the February 1st, 2021. Planning Commission will revisit the process for approving the CUP to determine, or the new license structure now, to determine whether they want to continue to hold the public hearing for approval of those licenses or to handle that administratively with city staff.
Okay, but you're saying that the second reading is going to determine the status of our CUPs?
At the second reading, if it's adopted, it will go into effect beginning February 1st of 2021.
Okay, so that's pretty quick.
So you need to get your hand on the whole big shebang.
Yeah, I would love that, yeah.
And that's online.
It's online, okay.
So you can read that. And thank you for speaking.
Okay, so is there anything else we could do other than coming and talking to you here tonight? I mean, is there any other avenue that we have?
Well, if you want to read it and make some other public comment or whatever, you may, you may do that.
But that's all online, is what you're saying?
Well, not the public comment, well, tell them how we do this thing.
Well, you can also email all the council members with additional thoughts that you have.
Like these folks.
We ask that you email all five of us and CC, the city manager, with additional thoughts that you have, that we have an opportunity to read and take into consideration.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Do we typically have a public comment at the second meeting?
It's usually on consent calendar, but absolutely, we can have it pulled, and one of you can pull it off if we've received comments, and absolutely.
Great. Okay, good, thank you. Okay, yeah.
All right, and one other thing, I'm a little hard of hearing, so I didn't quite hear the open thing earlier. As I said, our son has, he has a walker, and he's learning to walk with sticks. We're on Clarissa, and there's those two curbs that.
I was going to comment to you, because I see you when you bring your son. We're in the works of doing the cuts on Clarissa, so that the.
Wonderful, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. And then one other thing, we have a spot for our golf cart, and everyone inevitably parks right in front of our, because we don't have a cutout. Is there any way that we can get a handicap? Because we have a handicap plaque or something to at least block that area so people don't block it, so we can get our golf cart out, or how does that work?
That's an application.
Andrew, we have a formal process for a handicap curb. So if you would email me or give me your email address, I can send it to you. But I think one of the stipulations in there is a full-time resident, though.
Okay, what about if we need to get a curb cut?
We have an application for that also, and we do discourage those only for the reason that it takes away parking and because, as you know, on the sidewalks, there's always those dips for each.
No, I agree, that's why I was just trying to figure out. Because we pull out a wood thing, and I'm fine leaving the curb. It's just, when I'm over here with my son, and I want to get him and take him somewhere, and someone's blocked us off for the whole day, it's hard for us, so I don't know how to.
And we can also follow up with you right after the meeting if you want to talk about any of the other issues. I don't want to detract from the public hearing either.
No, no, I don't either, so I appreciate, I have a babysitter with my daughter, so I just, maybe I can get a card, or who do I contact about that?
Andrew, why don't you come on over here and give me your email?
All right, thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
We got, okay, we got somebody else coming up? Oh, Orin. You're welcome, you're welcome. If this place was packed, I'm sorry, we wouldn't have indulged so much, I don't think, but.
We have another gentleman who wants to speak.
Hello, City Council. My name is Joe Van Remortal. Thank you for your service. Hi, Andy.
See, boy, my eyes are bad. Hi, Joe.
Longtime visitor to the island, family's been coming for years. We have a good friend that lives here, part of our family. Hello, Tony. And I'm a recent homeowner. This change won't affect our family at all, but I'm worried about the unintended consequences. And what I'd love to hear is, what is your objective with this? Like, what are you achieving with this change, like specifically?
That's one of my questions when we come back here.
And I think like Michael said, or the city attorney, it's about balance.
But you already have a process by which you approve or disapprove CUPs. So in terms of controlling the density of CUPs, the density of rental properties, like, the deal is, you already do that. So why go through a licensing method?
Joe, the city attorney, wait, hold on, Scott, the city attorney just heard your question. So go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, so again, the Planning Commission considered many things, but one of the items with licensing is, when a CUP, as it is right now, runs with the land, when the property is sold, someone new comes and takes over the property. And in the Planning Commission, over the last 10 years that I've been here, many of the complaints about CUPs are dealing with the fact that the owners of the property are not responsive to the neighbors, they don't have proper management, they don't know the rules. And so one of the reasons, it's not the only reason, but one of the reasons the Planning Commission and the council directed us to come up with a licensing scheme is so that every time there's a new owner of the property, that that person appears before the Planning Commission and goes through this public process so they understand the importance of maintaining the property, of keeping it quiet, not bothering the neighbors, and that the neighbors can come in and speak about the fact that we don't want another noisy party house next to us, or, gosh, this house is very quiet, we aren't supportive of that. So it's a manner in which new property owners can come before the city and get that permit. And then in that discussion, because CUPs run with the land, there's not that opportunity. But then the discussion was, how can we make that an opportunity? And rather than do it within five years of this ordinance, or 10 years, or two years, the Planning Commission decided to preserve the property rights as long as possible, or to not impact existing property owners as long as possible, we'll give it to sales. So that's how they, that's how they came up with this. But again, the purpose, one of the main purposes is to make certain that there's a public hearing when property ownership changes so that everyone can understand the importance of the rules for CUPs, and the neighbors can come and talk about how that property impacts them.
Well, thank you, I think I totally understand that, that makes sense. And what I'm hearing is, you want more control over who's going to be your neighbor? Like, should you do that for every property?
I don't understand, I don't want to misread that comment. Can you explain that comment? When you say you want more control over your neighbors.
Oh, I was, I was just paraphrasing what I heard from the city attorney. Like, there's a, there would be a new process to make sure that, look, we have a new holder of a license, we want to make sure they're good neighbors, they know how to take care of their place, they're not going to have parties and be loud.
No, no.
Do that for every house sale?
The issue is, when they allow people to take the property for a weekend, it's not for the people that live there, it is for the guests that rent the place for one or two or three days. Those who, that, those type of people and the visitors that come over, that's who the complaints are largely generated. And so again, the purpose of the licensing thing is, it's a right to have some other people use your home. But with that comes responsibilities and making certain that the people that are temporarily using the home as a place for a weekend or a week, there are certain rules that come with the temporary use of property. And one of the purposes of this proposal is to make certain that everyone that owns a property, before they go ahead and start allowing it to be used as an Airbnb or a house for other people that is not them to come to, they understand the rules, that the neighbors can say, you're going to be managing this because one of the requirements is you have to have a management company that is available 24 hours if there are complaints. This is the way of doing that. Again, when it runs with the land, there's less ability to make certain that the new person who owns the property is complying with the rules.
Okay, I hear what you're saying, but I don't think that going from a licensing to a CUP model is going to change that. There are laws already. Noise ordinances, public drunkenness. I have a contract with CIVR, there's a sign on my property that says, if there's an issue, call them. They do. As a homeowner, you can set up sort of a pricing strategy where, I'm telling you, we're not going to have a bunch of college kids at my house. They're just not going to pay for it. And I have seen plenty of homes with. And I have seen plenty of homes with wild parties going on where it is not a CUP, right? It is a homeowner and their kids are there. Bottom line is, I don't really understand the objectives of this.
Part of it...
And what I would say is your unintended consequences are, when people make a property purchase like this, it's a long-term deal, and they're buying them right now. If there's a possibility that that CUP is gonna go away, it's not gonna be as valuable, they're not gonna make investments. We see plenty of really old homes in Catalina that have CUPs that are just like two-bedroom, one-bath, it's 100 years old, and someone's willing to buy that and invest a lot of money to improve it, to get seven or eight or 10 people over here, spending money, paying the taxes, eating at restaurants, going on fish tours. Like, honestly, this is gonna be a decision that you make that... I don't have a dog in this hunt, like, my property, it'll be like 100 years before it even matters.
Well, Joe...
But we care so much about Avalon, and I'm telling you, there are upgrades that need to happen, and this could be a disastrous unintended effect.
Well, like you...
If you let this happen.
But like you said, one of the reasons all of this starts is because we don't have a lot of housing stock for our residents, and you know that as true.
Yes.
And so, if perchance, at 50 to 70 years down the line, if that CUP doesn't go with it and doesn't increase that value by $50,000 to $70,000, perhaps someone in Avalon would be able to buy that location. So, go ahead.
Annie, you touched on something important, like, if the objective of this change is to create more housing for residents, it's gonna have the complete opposite effect.
Well, okay, just...
Like, that is a separate issue, if anybody thinks that this thing where you're gonna, like, suddenly reject a CUP and take somebody out of a license and their property's gonna come up for rent, like, who's gonna be the owner and who's gonna upkeep it and who's gonna invest more money? Nobody. Like, housing for residents is absolutely critical.
Yes.
It is. This is not a good way to solve that problem. Seriously.
Well, it's a little bit of it, perhaps, again, we're talking...
Only in the short run, like, you are 15, 20, 30 years down the line and it's gonna be like, holy Toledo, it had no effect except to keep dilapidated properties, like, available for people to rent, and they're not gonna wanna rent anymore. And then you're gonna take that CUP away from somebody, and who's gonna buy that property?
But we're not taming or taking it away.
Michael's not gonna buy that property.
They're gonna come and reapply for a license in 30 years, and then that planning commission will say, yeah, it's still not saturated, we still have, you know, the protection on...
I don't know, that uncertainty is everything, like, who would buy that property? Like, I don't know, it could happen, it might not happen.
Yeah.
Like, seriously.
Yeah, so anyway, okay, I'm here.
So, think about the objectives, the unintended, if there's a housing issue, yes, this is not a way to solve that.
Okay.
That's why I...
Thank you, no, thank you, Joe. Okay, anybody else?
I have four written comments.
Okay.
The first one is from William Sheding, he writes, "Please read this comment until the minute of the meeting. I was unable to make public comment at the planning commission meeting. One, the phone number went to voicemail, should've been routed to the commission. Two, the e-comment page gave me a 404 error, page not found, verified by Mike. I sent an email, three, I sent an email showing the 404 error, no response. Having said that, I repeat that the public was not provided any workable means other than personal attendance to make public comment at the planning commission meeting required by the Brown Act. Was that meeting and recommendation legally valid for the council to consider the commission recommendation at this time? Lastly, considering the income to the city generated by the TOT, you should, one, be more attentive to the details on the agenda, two, do better outreach to the owners of the transient rentals, see income above, and remember that the vast majority of the owners do not subscribe to the newspaper that arrives way after the 72-hour posting, notice posting requirement, or live locally in Avalon on your proposal to make major changes to the transient rental program. Three, consider the income that the rental properties provide to the other core tourist business of Avalon. Four, think of the potential harm you may do to the rental properties in Avalon. And five, why does Hamilton Cove have a favored nation status when it comes to transient rentals? Respectfully submitted, William L. Sheding." The next comment that I have says, "I, we, understand the city's need to increase its revenue. However, the ordinance proposed to establish a new transient rental licensing system should only apply to new CUPs that are issued after the approval of the ordinance, provided that the ordinance is passed. Properties with CUPs that have been part of a property's title should be grandfathered and left alone. Our property has been in our family since 1972 and the CUP has been part of our property. It does not seem fair that the city council can change the CUP status for long-term Avalon property owners. Please be mindful of our situation. Thank you, Andrew and Craig O'Rourke."
What was that?
The third comment I have is from William Sheding, he writes, "My wife, Susan R. Sheding, requests to speak as well but cannot get the system to work." And then the fourth...
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
And then the fourth comment that I have comes from Erica Cushing, she writes, "Hi, Erica Cushing, wanting one sale to be categorized as a rule for determination for CUP."
I'm sorry, can you read that again, slower?
She writes, "Hi, Erica Cushing, wanting one sale be categorized as a rule for determination for CUP."
Oh, instead of a two.
Oh, requesting one year instead of two, oh, okay, I understand.
All right, well, do we wanna discuss this anymore, or do we...
Mayor, would you close the public hearing, please?
Oh, yes, close the public hearing, okay.
And I have been chastised and I apologize to the council that I don't know why I wasn't setting my timer and that I was letting people talk way too long, and I apologize for that. And going forward, there will be a two-minute timer.
And again, that is me, my problem, too. Nope, you're done, we just closed the public hearing. Okay, so you can type us a note. So, Council, what's your pleasure, what else do you wanna discuss?
Me first?
Yes.
Considering that Lisa and I were not on this council, or at that time that you guys sent this to the planning commission, what was your planned outcome?
Kinda numerous ones. To try to catch a balance, and we know we need housing, we know we need income, to have people just sit on these CUPs and not do anything with it doesn't do us any good other than increase their property values. And so, hopefully, that will be dealt with, and what we're doing with those, I think we, they get revocation hearings, but even at that, some of these people, you rent it for 100 bucks and you give the city 12 bucks and you keep your CUP. That, just because that keeps their property values up on the house, they're not doing it to make money, to pay their property taxes, they're just doing it to keep that, so when they sell it, they have that much more value in the property. And again, perhaps that, some of those would be homes, especially some of those on the flats, that could accommodate locals to be able to have something in...
How many CUPs that we currently have that have not paid TOT or have not rented out their units?
I know, I don't think Michael has that readily at his fingertips.
Have we revoked any CUPs?
This is Scott, I believe the number's 18.
Then why have we not...
Why did you pull that out, Scott?
Then why have we not checked into those that have a CUP and they're not renting it and we're not collecting anything on it? Why are we not?
When Amanda was the planning director, she went through with the planning commission a whole process for issuing out letters, basically stating, "Please prove that you're fulfilling the obligations as required to maintain the CUP", and it did result in the revocation, or will result in the revocation of several inactive CUPs. People who are voluntarily giving them up or that are not in compliance. I just don't have that information here.
We have, my issue being is, for the 25 years that I have lived on this island, this is always going on. There is, you're never gonna make somebody who owns property here to open up their property for rental. If they've bought something for the family to come and vacation with, they're gonna come here, they're not gonna open it up for year-round.
Right.
Very few people here are going to rent their property year-round. And because of where we are and how people qualify for housing, to buy housing here on the island, we fall in a strange category in that we make too much money to be considered low-income, so you don't qualify for that. It's just the nature of being here on the island. And I can tell you right now that we do this, that's not gonna open up any housing for anyone because they're not gonna want to just rent out their house for year-round housing. So now we'll have, like we were saying with the census, you'll have people knocking on doors of empty houses because nobody's living there. So I don't, we're trying to fix something that actually works, and if we actually followed our guidelines and you get complaints, you follow up on the complaints, if they get so many complaints, then why isn't there a revocation hearing for them? They're supposed to have property managers, there's supposed to be numbers posted on the door or on the window to tell you who you can call to complain. And I'm gonna go to a side that I didn't wanna go, but the shares department is supposed to take these reports along with the city, and that needs to happen also. If you're complaining about noise, complain to the people that are gonna go and cite, but it just seems like it's a constant, we go through this every couple of years. And I have never been a big proponent of CUPs. When I first moved to the island, I thought they were not good for the community, but I have changed and seen how they work. But we need to enforce the rules that we've got to make them to work. And to me, this is, this is, if we were to pass this, I would pass it and go, okay, going forward, this is what it's gonna be, but everybody else is grandfathered and that's the way it's gonna be for everybody, there's not gonna be an amortization, they just get to keep their CUP, it'll stay with the property. But anything going forward, fine, if this is something you guys wanna install, that's great. But to go back to those people that have been renting, that have had these CUPs, I would not be in favor of that.
Okay, thanks for your comment. And Lisa?
So I think at the joint planning commission council meeting, I was actually the one who suggested the two-sale option in comments, I wasn't on the commission or the council at that time. But the discussion was to try to make it a more fair and equitable system and to also make it trackable in terms of sales, that at the time, there was not any adjustment made for who had the CUP, they went with the sale of the property and the land and the house. And to try to remove it from that and look at, one of the concerns that council member, Mughan Cassidy, has mentioned tonight about the property rate and what that value is with the CUP included and or not. So, to my mind, this was after, I wanna say, a couple of hours of discussion that took place on that evening, along with hours of work done by the planning commission to talk about it, the city council to talk about it, and it went back and forth, and it's gone back and forth, like you said, for quite some time. And everyone looking for those particular items to be resolved had found that this was an equitable way to do that and to give control back to the city in terms of the CUP, as opposed to hoping that the next sale was an okay sale and that it would impact the neighborhood and the people around it in a positive way. So, my preference would be to move forward with the ordinance as it's written. I'm curious to know, and I don't know if this is something that we have access to, the number of CUPs that are currently part of a trust as opposed to individual ownership? It sounds like that is the way for those CUPs to maintain the CUP for the life of their ownership and their family's ownership, is to be able to put it into a trust and have trustees added or removed as people come into the ownership or need to be removed from it. That that would allow them to extend even further potentially the life of their CUP usage and wouldn't trigger a sale to start with. So my, you know, I'm not offering a recommendation, but that just sounds like what that step would be for some people to be able to do that. But I would recommend that we move forward with the licensing to allow for both the equity in the playing field and also for the ability to track better.
Do you want to comment?
I felt that city staff represented my comments in the report summary from the last couple of years of discussion. The only other point that was not mentioned is part of the decision-making process and having the ability to come back and make a decision whether a license would be granted or not is also saturation, that right now, there's a mechanism for saturation to say if, you know, two-thirds or whatever the number is today, and somebody wants to come in and they're, you know, denied because of other saturation, it sort of leaves a potential that, you know, somebody buying a property is not gonna continue a license and opens it up for someone else to be able to apply for one. So, just on the opposite spectrum, it provides an opportunity for somebody who hasn't, who may not have had a license, if that's what we call it going forward. I also want to echo council member Ponce's comments that we have a lot of laws, far beyond the city of Avalon, we have a lot of laws that are put into effect and a lot of ordinances and all these, and there is something to be said for a lack of enforcement. And I don't say that in any way towards our city staff, what we have is a lack of rule-following on residents and visitor part, and we also do have a lack of resources, especially now where we are reduced significantly in city staff. So, I know one of the requests for information I've asked for over and over and over and over again is, you know, a history of the CUPs, how many per year, how many per year are given up, how many per year are added to it? Well, I have been given some information, but really what I think is valuable for the community to see is, let's just take a 30-year history and let's graph it out and say, here's how many are given each year and here's how many are reduced from that CUP process. So, I think that's valuable too, because at the end of the day, some say that we're just, you know, giving, 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 every planning commission, there's more and more, but what we're not reporting on is how many are given back. So, I think in doing this whole process, it provides another resource for city staff to sort of monitor a little bit better annually, so that's partially why I wanted to see this process move forward.
Well, and also, Amanda has provided information in the past, and it's been quite some time ago, it seems like, whatever that is, about, she says it pretty much stays the same, isn't that right? The numbers don't go this way or that way, they're pretty much the same. But I have a neighbor that put both of his houses, took them out of the transient rental business to rent to locals year-round, and that's awesome. He's still able to hold on to the CUP, but, anyway, so, that's good. So that's two. Okay. So, well, the question is, what are the things we wanna do if we go forward is, can we set a date differently than two weeks?
For the second reading?
Yes.
Absolutely, Mayor.
Okay, so that might be like...
Is that correct, Scott?
And I guess, if I could, the question is, you need three votes to pass an ordinance. And so, the question is, are there three votes to pass an ordinance that has the amortization and makes future CUP licenses after two sales? Are there three votes for that tonight? Are there three votes to just go to a licensing in the future? We just need to understand what the action would be tonight.
Yes, they haven't made a motion yet, Scott, but the question from the mayor was that do we have to bring the second reading in two weeks? And I said, no, we did not.
No, you do not, no, no.
But you're telling us that...
You could pass a first reading tonight, and the second reading can be whenever. The only difference is, is that whatever you pass tonight, if you modify it at the second reading and you modify it, then the second reading becomes the first reading because you've modified it. And then you have to go to, you know, at least, you know, the next meeting after that is when you adopt it.
Okay, my question is, if we're trying to wait around for the last council person, why do we have to say what we want? Why don't we, can't we just say it's open because we're going to be getting more feedback? And then if we do change it, or then by not selecting one today, we still go into the second reading, and then if we change it then, then it goes through the process again, right?
But you have to adopt something for a first reading tonight.
You'd have to select one of those. Definitely have to select.
One thing that you, one thing that you could do, again, it's my job to give the council options. You could adopt for a first reading, both versions of the ordinance. One that has the amortization in it, that is the two sales that we've been talking about, and one that it just has the licenses, and that's it. And then for the second reading, you decide which one you want to adopt, and we don't have to set that, that, the date of that second hearing would be when you get back to five council people. That is an option tonight, because we have both ordinances with the license, with the CUPs turning in the license or just the licenses for futures. We have those ready to go tonight, whatever you want to do.
And I was just going to add to discussion, sorry, I'll make a motion. Can we do one of, a couple of things communication-wise, just because of what we're hearing tonight? Can we either develop and or maintain a mailing list for CUP people? We have their addresses, do we have their email addresses?
No, probably not.
I do not know if the email address is put on that form, Lisa. But you certainly don't want to do mailings every time because of the cost of mailing.
Sure, no, absolutely. But I'm just thinking, if it's, so one of two things, either one, could we email them if there's something that pertains to them? Or two, could we maintain a site or a page either on the chambers website, because it sounds like many of them go to that site, or the city's website that then has a detailing of any updates that may be happening?
I will say, Lisa, on the email address, just today in my meeting with Matt Baker, we were discussing the business licenses and how we could notify, but on...
I was just going to comment, that's one area where we do need to update our information. So generally, when, how the license process works, when the business fills out the initial application, any short-term vacation rental would have a business license. When they fill out the application, that's where we get all their contact information. Unfortunately, unfortunately, a lot of businesses have been in our database for a number of years and didn't necessarily provide us with an email address at the time they filled the initial application out. So I thought I'd take this opportunity to say, as part of the renewal process, if you could provide your email address, that would be great, because as of right now, we don't have email addresses for a considerable number of businesses that are in our database. And so our only way of contact would be the mailing address that was provided during the application process.
I think we should put it on the vacation rental people too. I know Andrew said that he doesn't use CIVR. I don't know who he does use for his rentals, because I don't know where you live. Oh, yeah, you live on...
So Mayor, when I said the business license, because in order to have a CUP, you pay a business license each year, so...
I know, but also, no, but when we were having this discussion, I was thinking that the vacation rental places have some responsibility to the people that they're making money off of. But then Andrew said he doesn't use CIVR, so I don't know how he advertises his...
There's other smaller management groups that work with vacation rentals too, besides CIVR and besides...
But they have signs on their windows and tell them who to do?
Yeah.
Okay.
But, and it may be just, you know, that they live in the house next door and they have one next to them, or they live in, you know, there's people that live in the same house and have a split, but I just think if there's a way that we can provide every avenue to be able to communicate with them. And, you know, the part that I know of unfortunately, having spent a lot of time trying to get people to read things all of my life, is that most people don't read things.
Right.
It's just the way that the society is, it's easy to skip over things unless you're told it repeatedly, you may not remember it. So there's that aspect of it as well, but if we can at least remove some of that and have a spot where people know they can go to get that information, then I think we can at least try to erase some of the concern that we're hearing tonight from a lot of the people that are in this pool of residents. I would make a motion to introduce, and we're not waiving all readings then, so are we waiving all readings or are we having all consent next time? Right?
Hang on, yeah. What the concept of waiving a reading means is that if you don't waive a reading, then someone, i.e. me or Denise, has to read every word of an ordinance, and so that could take for a long time.
Years and years.
So...
Okay, so introduce...
So you have, and I don't know if it's been handed out, there are two drafts. There's one that just is licenses, and there's one that's licenses and gets rid of CUPs after two sales.
Right, so if I was going to do the amortization and the licenses, it would be the recommended action on the current council agenda under item six, right?
Yes, it would, with the, yes, yes, there's one typo there in a section, it's nine-dash-eight-point-four-oh-one.
Nine...
In Article eight.
We're after to do through it.
You can read... Yes.
Nine-eight-four-oh-one, okay.
I think that, let me triple check, hang on.
That's it. So I would move to introduce and waive all readings of an ordinance of the city of Avalon amending section nine-dash-six-point-six-oh-two of Article six of chapter six of Title Nine of the Avalon Municipal Code, deleting subsection D through F of section nine-dash-eight-point-four-oh-one of Article four of chapter eight of Title Nine of the Avalon Municipal Code, amending section nine-dash-eight-point-eight-zero-one of Article eight of chapter eight of Title Nine of the Avalon Municipal Code, and adding a new Article three to chapter one of Title Three of the Avalon Municipal Code to establish a new transient rental licensing system.
I just have one correction to Lisa's motion at the very part, first part where she said D through F of section nine-dash-eight-point-four-zero-four.
Zero-four, excuse me.
Yeah, yeah, that was the change.
Thank you.
So that's fine, though. And then the motion would be to waive all further readings of that ordinance as well, correct?
Great, okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second, any further comments? Call for the vote. Denise?
Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
No.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Cassidy?
Aye.
So for the record, we have three ayes and one no, councilmember Ponce and one absent.
Okay, so I think that covers it except for closed session?
Nope.
No.
Nope.
Item seven.
Oh, no, we have two more items.
Where those come from? Oh, yes, the one is the committee thing.
Sure, so we voted on in the, the motion was to move forward with the amortization and the license, and then it would go to the...
That is correct, yes.
...for a second reading, which we don't have, do we have a date that we want to establish for that?
Yes, we should.
Yeah. Currently, yes, sir.
So what we changed, you didn't change any of it?
Currently, no.
Currently, no, right.
And we're going to a second reading on that?
Not a reading, but a second hearing, yes. Yes.
We have two dates in December, Mayor, the first and the fifteenth, and then in January, it would be January fifth.
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I have no preference on date. I don't know if we want to wait longer or not.
I would suggest that we do it in December since the ordinance has an effective date of February first. So if you adopt it in, if the second meeting is in December, that gives time. If you don't, then we have to change the adoption, the effective date to be on February first. So I would suggest that you pick one of the two dates in December. You don't have to say it now, but Denise can work with...
I'd rather just put it on...
See if she can make one of those two dates.
Yeah, so the people know.
Should we make it the fifteenth? I don't know if the fifteenth is better to allow people more time if they want to make public comment and or comment.
Right, second week in December.
I would say the fifteenth would be my recommendation.
The fifteenth?
Yeah.
Now, what happens though with you if the other council member doesn't come back?
What do you mean?
What if she doesn't come to that meeting?
Well, I mean, we've already moved forward. I just wanted to be inclusive. I felt that it was important to have her representation here as well. That was the sole reason for that. And also, I will be calling in for the fifteenth meeting. I won't be present.
So do you pick the date, the fifteenth?
The fifteenth?
December fifteenth. So December fifteenth. I'm sorry? We don't need that.
Motion is second for taking the date?
Okay. And then next item?
Item seven on the agenda is designation of the city council members to the Community Broadband Working Group called Island Connectivity Group. And this was spearheaded by Jim. There are currently five members on this little board. It's Jim from the chamber, Julie Gilbert, Cindy Cassidy, and Lisa Lavelle, if they are so appointed this evening. And we have a staff member, Devon Hart is sitting on it also. I believe they've met a few times, and I know they have a report out. We have done this prior in other things like the Event Strategies Group, the Hospital Measure Group, and then most recently the Water Consortium, which will be coming back on the December first one to formally have the mayor and the mayor pro tem sit in on that regarding the water rate case for Southern California.
So since I've kind of spearheaded this, I'll just give a quick update.
But formally organized by the outside, but organized by an outside group.
Right. I mean, just spearheaded the fact that we need an organized group. And Jim Lutjehan has stepped forward to sort of lead our group. We have added an additional community member, Gabriel Saldana, who many of you know is very well in tune with broadband and internet-related issues and has a real passion for it, which is fantastic. It gets another member of our younger community involved in this type of working group. And really, a report out for us, we've had two meetings, very informal meetings, just to sort of introduce concerns, to talk about some of the history of connectivity issues, both with cellular service and with internet. And we have also opened, and I believe will continue to open up for members of Catalina Broadband, AT&amp;T, Verizon, and any other network who is interested in Catalina to come and give information. We had a wonderful update from Catalina Broadband in our last group gathering to just talk about the history of the work that Catalina Broadband has done, specifically over the last couple of years. I know I've alluded to that in prior meeting as well. So, you know, the goal for us is to increase the services that we have and to better the services, better the networks, better the coverage. And what we've heard over and over is, especially with Verizon being down for a couple of days, is that these connectivity issues are in fact a matter of life and death. If you cannot get a phone call out to even call 911, we have a real problem. So that being said, those are the great reasons why we want to increase our connectivity. We're also seeing our community being advertised, and many members of our community advertising for us to be what's known as like a Zoom community, where now that our kids are still in virtual schools and parents are virtually working, you know, why not come and work virtually and go to school in, you know, the beautiful island of Catalina? But we cannot be sustainable the way that we are right now. And so having a member of city staff and having minds on a group that understand this, I am not specifically a person who understands all this technology, but I do understand how it affects businesses, how it affects our students right now, and how we just, we've talked about it for as long as I've been a member of the community, and I'm just really excited to be part of seeing hopefully a solution and better network and connectivity going forward. So we, the group would be most open to, you know, another couple of members, member or two that would be a member of our community who would be interested in participating or who felt that they had some value that they could add to the group. And I would say if you are one of those members of the community, if you could contact Jim Lutjehan at the chamber, and he will assist in involving you in the group. So I personally would request to be designated along with councilmember Lavelle as the two members of the city council to continue these conversations.
Okay, so do we have to make a motion to designate Mayor Pro Tem, Cindy Cassidy, and Councilmember Lisa Lavelle to the Island Connectivity Group?
And don't forget public comment.
Oh, I won't. Is there public comment?
I have no public comment.
Okay. There is no public comment?
No. Yes, we do, Carl.
Who is, oh, you know what? I thought that was Chief Krug in the back with all the black on.
No, he's over here.
Oh, there he is.
It's Carl.
Carl. Thank you, Cindy, for putting this, making this known. My business is affected by this. I can actually put down in numbers how much money I've lost in just a two-month span of lack of internet. In the two hours before this council meeting, my internet service went in and out three times. Since I've been sitting here at this council meeting, my internet has been out again twice. So I have notifications that come to my phone every time the internet cuts in and out. And I'm very much interested in being a part of the conversations myself, and the one thing I wanted to encourage is, anyone out there listening, there are apps out there to track your usage or track your connectivity. One of them, I, some, SolarWinds, Spice Works, Fresh Works, they're just a few services, and they will notify you when your service is down, and it will document outages. And I just encourage, I think that alone would be very helpful, having documentation of individuals like me who've had countless outages. In the last week, I've probably had at least a dozen in and outs every day. And they're just a matter of five minutes or so, but that hinders my business when I have voice-over IP, the only form of advertising is online, and it really hurts. And so I'm willing to help, and I just wanted to make that one recommendation about documentation. I think that's key in the fight.
Great.
Part of the discussion that we had, Carl, just so you know too, is there's a number of entities that will do speed tests and do speed test tracking, so that when you have issues, you can then run a speed test through this one site that will then map an entire city or map an entire region. And so that was part of the discussion we've actually had already too, is to try to implement something like that, that would allow people, when there is an outage, to be able to go on, do a speed test right then, and not only track just the speed in general, but outages and things of that nature.
Yeah, because I know about the speed test, but I don't think people are aware of, you can actually put your IP address in a system, put in your email address and your phone number, and it'll text you or email you every time.
It goes down.
It goes out. Your Wi-Fi has just been disconnected. Your Wi-Fi has now been reconnected. Your Wi-Fi has now been disconnected. And I get those messages a dozen or two dozen times a day.
Yeah.
So...
No, it's phenomenal and smart and appreciate the...
That's just an extra step on top of the speed test. This is like a bandwidth test.
Right.
Okay, great, Carl, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then I'll continue with my motion to just...
And I'll second.
Thank you. Move to second, no further comment? Matt, you got a comment?
No comment.
Oh, okay. Let's call for the vote.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Cassidy? Mayor Pro Tem Cassidy?
Aye.
And we need to take a brief break.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, this next one is... I know I should get up and speak.
Okay, I'll just do that. Is that...
No, I won't say. I won't say.
With some contingency in it and but what happened is it actually grew over time because as the contractor demoed it, it just grows in quantity, okay? This underneath is also the the beams. So what I showed you on the last picture was the top structure. So you can see that at the top left corner there, that would be opening one. And as I continued to the right and then down on the next level there and continue to the right of that, you're seeing the first 10 openings and you can see the the first piece of the one through seven was work that was already completed in 1990 and we had rehabilitated it. And and as we continue on to the tip of the mole, you can see that the work that's grayed out there is a lot more extensive. And so that's what we found more damage in the area that hadn't been rehabilitated. And then the piece that had been rehabilitated, it actually was holding up pretty well. Okay? And then all of that information gets tabulated and totaled up and gets into estimated quantities. Okay? And this is a piece, one page out of nine that that helped identify all those locations within the design report. So it's a sample to show you that it was a very detailed look at this as they went into the design report. Okay? And then the second topic is work that will still remain, that we won't get done in this phase of the project and hopefully gets done in phase two. So these two sides depict areas that are still remaining that can be completed with a future project. If you recall, we said that this was the work that happened in openings one through seven that previously repaired in 1990 and is in better condition than the work than openings in eight through 20. Additionally, the first opening next to the mole, we won't finish that until phase two and that will be including the grates and the beams. Okay? So right there at the mole crane, that opening will not be done with this phase one project. Okay? Here's a completed look as we look down there and it's been a while since we've all been out there, but we'll reopen this here in December. We'll take all the fences down and then the public will be allowed to occupy this again till we get going on phase two. So you can see that we got all new grates in, we've got all new beams in, the concrete surface has been repaired. And then what you don't see here is all the work on the beams, which will be in other photos here as I move forward. Here's another look in the other direction, seeing a nice clean project. All the rust and corrosion and all the spalling concrete is now gone.
It's clean, depth, and to resalt.
This photo here is showing the completed surface in some areas. It looks like there's a little more patching. And to make sure that we get a homogeneous, uniform surface when we're done, it's actually in phase two that we're going to put an epoxy sand coating over this to help seal it and then it'll also give us a uniform look. But we don't want to do that before we get done with phase two because we plan in phase two to use this for lay down yard, potentially parking if needed, other things that we need to do to be able to get as we tear those buildings down, all those other uses. So but we will, what people will see when we do, before we open this, is we'll grind some of those imperfections to be able to make this concrete more smooth. That's still on the contractor's list to do. What this picture shows is the extent of how that surface concrete, that deck concrete grows. This area here was where they had the baggage storing area that was fenced off. And so what you see here is that potentially what was going to be about a third of this area grew to the whole area, okay? And that's when they started pinging it, they could see that this is what was left. And you can see that the corrosion in the rebar there and the extent of it. Okay? And then on this picture here, you're seeing the extent of what we have to do to the beams. And this is just in the grade opening. And then the first seven openings, we didn't do the rest of the beams because they were still, they were the ones that we talked about that were being redone, that were redone in 1990. And openings eight through 20, we had to do this all the way down the length of the beams and we had scaffold underneath. And so one of the things that public noticed when we had larger wave events is we lost some of that scaffolding and some of the wood would go into water. And that was quite extensive scaffolding that we had to have up. It just couldn't be done from a float or a boat. It needs to be able to have a stable surface to be safe and to be able to brace the work. This is the condition of the beams when we just took the grates off. You can see that they're highly corroded and there's hardly any web for structural value left, which would be the vertical member in those beams. Okay? And so you can see also, and this was in the area of one through great, one through seven, so the beams are actually, the concrete beams are actually in good shape, but the steel beams are not. You see how we have to get down to the concrete and get down to competent concrete. And this is a good picture showing we've got down to steel, we've removed the steel that was corroded. Now we're ready to install new steel by drilling holes, epoxying in the steel and then tying into the other steel, coating that steel with a corrosion abatement product and then adding zinc anodes in there so that also abates the corrosion for the future, forming it up and repouring concrete, high strength concrete with 7,000 PSI. Okay? So that's what we have for pictures. And then so the third topic here is the cost. There are two items that increased significant in quantity. And since there's, this is a unit price contract, the exact quantity is estimated and paid for in unit prices. So on this slide here, this is the proposed final estimates. And what I've shown here, just for a basis, as we get to the last, the quantities that are in, the total quantities estimated to date in the middle of the page, that column there versus the bid quantity. So you can see on the item three, deck spall repair and item four, deck soffit and beam spall repair, you could see the bid quantity on deck spall repair was about 2,100 cubic feet. The actual quantity to date is 3,393 cubic feet. And then for the next item down, for the beams underneath, there's thirty, about 3,600 cubic feet versus the bid quantity of 2,100. So you can see that both of those increased, you know, above the range of 60 to 70% in quantity. And that again is that delamination factor getting under there. You can imagine that you're getting under the ocean with the beams there, you're pinging it out, you're trying to get to competent concrete. That's how, that's how that quantity grows, okay? But that is also, if you look at the contract unit prices all the way to the right, per cubic foot is $301 on the deck spall repair and per cubic foot on the, on the beam spall is $625. So for every one foot by one foot by one foot that we do, and we were doing lots of square feet that were probably four to six inches deep, that we paid, you know, $625. That's why it can creep up very fast on you. But once the works mobilized out there and we've got phase two on our heels, we've got to do the work. So what this tells us is that we've, you know, we're going to be coming back in December with another supplemental request to be able to finish out the project, okay? And I'm also, if anybody in the community wants to come and see, you know, a tour of the project to see how we got here or what's, you know, what the projects, they need more explanation to field, I'm willing to do that. So just give me a call. And so really that concludes the presentation. So if there's any other questions, I can answer those now.
Was, was square deck number one included in the original? It was included in the original plan?
Yes, it was.
And how, and I guess it doesn't really, they don't really have to take it out because it just is, is part of.
So we don't, we don't end up paying for, there'll be some beams and some grates that were already delivered and we've already paid for materials on hand. So that's how we pay for those items. It's the same thing with the pile covers protection. We have decided not to with that supplemental when we went with the first supplemental, that we would install those with phase two. And that was just to save the cost for the labor on that. But we've already purchased and that material's on hand and it's in our warehouse. So we're ready to go with it, you know? So everything can keep rolling. It's just, we need to let the funding catch up with the project to be able to fund, you know, that last little piece of it, you know? And when COVID hit and our cross channel carrier funds, you know, didn't result, you know, that, so that's, that's, we just got to control costs.
Well, it was very impressive to see and I'm glad we got the tour because when people talk about what are they doing, whatever, I mean, people do need to see it. It is amazing. And when you see that scaffold, because I haven't seen the other side of the mole than this whole time, when you see that scaffolding from the top and the bottom and this crawl space and, you know, and what they have to do, it's, it's amazing. I'm also very impressed that there have been no accidents because that is amazing too.
So I guess if you can respect that the contractor for 15 months has been jackhammering almost every day.
Yeah.
That is very tedious work underneath. Those guys holding, you know, a small jackhammer and just, and just like a dental tech.
Yeah.
So any other questions?
Anybody have a question on the, on your screen there?
I have no questions.
Okay. Well, thank you. And I think you did keep that to 10 minutes. Thank you very much. It would have been, not having seen it, this would have been much more difficult to comprehend.
And that's why I'm offering to the public, if they need some more information, want to see a personal tour, I'm offering that to them.
Thank you so much. That's awesome. That's a lot of work just putting all this together for us as well. Okay. Now we have closed session. Okay, the city council will be going into closed session.
For two items. The first one is conference with legal counsel.
Yes, we have conference with legal counsel, initiation of litigation on one cases and public employee appointment, fire chief and harbor master.
Way to go.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Scott. We'll call you.
Jesus Christ.
And Scott still on board?
I don't think so.
Oh, so Denise will call out the action. Oh, man.
I'm gonna ask Rob.
I don't know what he's gonna say, but that was very funny.
And we're back from closed session. The city council unanimously voted and gave direction to initiate an action. Thank you very much. Tony, if you're listening.
All right, Tony.
Meeting adjourned.